So before we get up for our pledge allegiance, first let me welcome you to the meeting of Placer County Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, July 21st. I want to advise all of my colleagues up here to be very careful as we stand for our pledge of allegiance because we don't have much to work with here. So if you'll join us in the pledge led by Supervisor Montgomery this morning.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Slide carefully into our places up here. I hope you'll understand when I say thank God for Robert's absence. We have a little bit of room. So Supervisor Wigant won't be with us today. He's enjoying a vacation right now. I don't know why he wouldn't plan his vacation to include this. How would you not do that? We're going to go ahead and continue with the statement of meeting procedures led by our clerk.
Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting of July 21st, 2015. Agendas are available on the table in the back of the room. If you are here to speak on an issue not appearing on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker. The board is not permitted to take action on items addressed under public comment. When you speak, clearly state your name and address for the record. All items on the agenda will be open for the public to address before final action is taken. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker, which will be monitored by a timer on the podium. If there is a person speaking on behalf of a group with no other testimony from another member of the group, please identify yourself as such and your time may be extended at the pleasure of the board. Keep in mind that the chairman has a discretion of limiting the total discussion time on any item. If you are hearing impaired, we have listening devices available. It is requested that all cell phones be turned off or be put in silent mode. Thank you for your participation and cooperation.
Thank you. All right, this is the...oh, no, before public comment, we'll go into our consent agenda. So we...I've been informed item number 15 needs to come off of consent and will be presented to us for consideration later. So any other items that any member of the board wants removed for discussion? Seeing none, any member of the public identify an item on our consent calendar that you would like removed for discussion? All right, we'll entertain a motion on consent, please.
Moving on to the meeting items.
Okay, motion Holmes and second Duran, all in favor? Oh, Rocco, I'm sorry.
Holmes?
Aye.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Duran?
Yes.
Euler?
Aye. All right, thank you. Now it's time for public comment. This is the time when folks can address the board on any item not on the agenda. There will be time for comments for items that are on the agenda, so if you have a comment on something not on our agenda today, please step forward, give us your name and where you live, and try to limit your comments to three minutes if you can, please. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Ann Nichols, Kings Beach, California, North Tahoe Preservation Alliance. Hi. Wanted to tell you how gratifying it is to see people walking along the sidewalks in Kings Beach with strollers and it's very thrilling. It's kind of a bummer about the roundabouts that they have to be redone and the curb taken out and the landscaping in the center. And, you know, I just wonder that whoever designed it for you guys, shouldn't they be held accountable about this kind of major error? One worries that it's going to be very messy. Won't people just kind of drive right over the top of the Center Island without any curb anymore? Anyway, yeah, that was a shame because a lot of the sales pitch on the roundabouts was that they were going to be so lovely, which they kind of are right now, so that's a shame. We're going to lose that landscaping. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Supervisor Montgomery has a thought to share on that.
Just...are we on?
Yep, you are.
Just as a heads up, we are still working with Caltrans. Caltrans did approve the design but have since come back and indicated that although they approved it, they would like us to change it. So we are still working with them to try to keep the landscaping because we agree. It's just phenomenal, but thank you very much for your comments.
Good morning. Ellie Waller, Tahoe Vista resident. Welcome to the lake today. Thank you for coming up to see our shelters. That'll be discussed later. When you came to see the Tahoe Vista shelter, you drove right by Snow Creek. And I understand there's some extenuating circumstances with how we're going to get that invasive clover out of there. I understand that the contractor is going to forfeit his bond. He says $10,000 is not enough to remediate the issue, so I hope there's a plan B. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Paul Smith. I'm with RCRC, the Rural County Representatives of California. I'm actually here on vacation and I was wandering the halls the other day and I realized the Placer County Board of Supervisors was meeting. Ran into Supervisor Holmes in the halls and we decided it'd be good to spend just a couple of minutes saying hello since I'm here and obviously the board is here. As you know, Placer County is a member of RCRC. We are an advocacy group based in Sacramento. We do a lot of work in the California Legislature, California regulatory world, as well as the federal arenas, Congress and whatnot. So I thought I would just say good morning to the board. It's been a while since I think RCRC has had any presence before the Placer County Board of Supervisors. And I just wanted to bring you up to date on a couple of issues that we are working on, particularly in the close of the legislative session for this year, as well as some ongoing federal issues, and make you aware. I don't know what your rules are in this Board of Supervisors, but generally when RCRC presents either in public comment or an agenda item, we always are willing to take questions and provide answers. But just a couple of things. First, again, want to thank Supervisor Holmes for his work at the Board of Directors level and also the other things that he does on behalf of RCRC. You're well-served on that organization by his presence. Also, just want to let you know, we will be coming back up to the Tahoe area in September for the annual conference. We have held it at this facility a number of times in recent years. We will be in South Shore in September and hope members of the Placer County Board of Supervisors, as well as Placer County staff, could attend that. Couple of issues just to highlight. I know time is tight and that is the Legislature's got about eight more weeks left before it adjourns in mid-September. Two or three big issues there that I know this board cares about. One is transportation funding. There's a major bill working its way through to provide some additional monies for transportation, particularly for rural areas. The RCRC Board of Directors voted to support one of those major bills, even though they do involve major tax increases, but they're also very beneficial to rural counties. Also, medical marijuana regulation, a huge issue in cultivating counties, particularly on the North Coast as well as other parts of rural California. Cultivation, again, continues to be a huge problem. There are a variety of medical marijuana licensing bills going through the Legislature, as well as some other things involved in the overall discussion about how we're going to treat marijuana in the future. Surface mining regulations, some major changes both at the regulatory level as well as legislature. We're focused on that. And then finally, on the state level, solid waste fees, very, very important issue, I know, to all of our member counties. Quickly, on the federal level, again, transportation, a big issue again there, needs reauthorization of the Surface Transportation Act, which expires this year. I'm sure your Public Works directors are very nervous about that as you're letting contracts involving federal dollars. And then finally, forestry reform continues to be an ongoing conversation. With that, I know my time's up in public comment. Just wanted to say good morning. Appreciate you guys being here, great timing that I'm here as well, and thank you for your membership in the organization.
Thank you. Thanks, Paul. And be more than happy at the end, perhaps the end of the legislative year, have you come up and give a presentation to our board for the year, kind of wrap up overview.
Be happy to do that. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Paul.
Taking time out of your vacation to come talk to us. See, Wigant wouldn't do that. What's wrong with him? Morning.
Good morning. I'm Dwayne Whiteley. I'm general manager of North Tahoe PUD and I would also extend a welcome to your board to the Tahoe area. Shortly after I was hired, it came to my attention that there are about 90 street lights that we pay the energy bill on to the tune of about $18,000 a year. And there appears to be no rhyme or reason as to why the lights are on. They don't seem to light our facilities. They don't seem to light your facilities. I had thought maybe there was a beach maintenance contract or something behind it, but...so anyway, we want to shut the lights off. Now, doing so brings out some interesting points of view. We tried to outreach with our community as much as we could. The theme is what we're hearing, people want to see the lights left on, concerns over children walking to the school bus in winter and all of that. I don't know what the policy is for street lighting in unincorporated areas of Placer County, but, you know, if there is an interest on the county's part to at least take a look at the list to see if any of those are of interest to you guys to keep them on, we would like to do everything possible to ensure that the most important ones are left on. I have been working a little with your Public Works Department to try and come up with a solution. I know you can't really talk about it today, but I'd like to ask that this be a continuing topic that we can hopefully work out by maybe the end of the year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Rob Weston. I represent the Lake Tahoe West Shore Association.
Hey, Rob, you see these cool ads?
You know, Kirk? I did. And that's what I came up to talk to you about, real briefly. I just wanted to publicly thank David Bosch and the executive staff, Supervisor Montgomery, her staff, Jennifer Merchant, Cadence Matevich. They've all been very, very helpful. You folks give us a sponsorship. Your sponsorship pays for 14 weeks of quarter-page color ads saying that the west shore businesses are open. It's really important to us because this is our fourth year of road construction. Unfortunately, Caltrans is grinding their way very slowly through Homewood and still haven't made it just about as far as Eagle Rock. Their goal this summer was to make it up to Sunnyside. I doubt they'll make that. That's not throwing them under the bus, but it's just a reality statement. So we're looking at three more years. We may need some help next year to continue to promote the fact that the west shore businesses are open, but thank you very much for everything you're doing for us. We really appreciate it.
Thanks, Rob.
Yes, good morning. My name's Carl Gustafson. I'm a 50-year resident of Squaw Valley, registered civil engineer in the state of California. And I noticed creek is drying up, the fish are dying or dead, and the groundwater level or aquifer is being lowered. And I believe the clearing capacity of our valley is being exceeded. And sooner or later, somebody's going to write a complaint to the State Water Resource Control Board regarding the water situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirk.
Good morning. My name's Ed Hennebel. I'm a resident of Squaw Valley, 38 years. And I am on the Mac, so I'm not wearing that hat. I'm just speaking as an individual, but I would welcome you to Squaw and I just am going to preview that now that the draft EIR has closed on July 17th for the Village at Squaw Valley proposal, you guys are going to be asked to find that sweet spot. So I think you're going to need a bigger room when you come up here next time in about six months. Anyway, thanks for what you do and we'll have some more controversy for you, I'm sure.
Wouldn't be Tahoe without it.
That's why we come.
Honorable Board of Supervisors, Peter Kratz. I'm with the Placer County Public Works Department. For the record, just wanted to make a quick announcement that before it's even done, we look to receive the American Public Works Association Award for the Kings Beach Commercial Core Improvement Project through the Sacramento chapter for the complete street section of the award. So just wanted to make that quick announcement to your board and the public and say thanks to your board and previous boards for supporting us on that project and to the public as well to see it through. Before it's even done, to get an award of this prestigious level is pretty exciting.
That's great. Thanks, Peter.
Congratulations.
Thanks for the announcement. Okay, anybody else? Well, conveniently, that takes us right to our 9:15 timed item. Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, Supervisor Committee reports before we go to our 9:15. Any members of the board have anything they'd like to report out at this time?
I have none, Mr.
No? Okay. All right, now, Ms. Merchant, if you want to come on forward, our 9:15 timed item is to provide an update and receive board direction on analysis of opportunities and constraints for siting the proposed Olympic Museum at Squaw Valley.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Do you prefer to stand there or sit there, or how do you want to?
I was thinking about standing here just because this is where the clicker was.
That's all right. Whatever works for you.
And I can scoot over there when we get to public comment. Because I may need to use a clicker again during that.
All right.
So, good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board and staff. Jennifer Merchant here to see you and discuss the Squaw Valley Olympic Museum. We've been to your board three times in the last year to discuss various alternatives and options and pros and cons of a couple of different sites and want to provide you with a little bit more detail today and get some direction on your preferences regarding moving forward. The project was initiated through an application to the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association for TOT funding back in 2008. Over the course of a couple of years, we provided $250,000 in TOT funds to the applicants to do analysis on the feasibility of the project, and they have since with that funding done a couple of different studies, looking at a variety of locations. So let's get to the conceptual sites. So this has been provided by the Squaw Valley Ski Museum Foundation, and this is a concept plan, a site plan, for the Squaw Valley Park Site. This is a preferred location, the location preferred by the Squaw Valley Ski Museum Foundation. And you can see, if I can make it work...would you prefer me to use this?
No.
Yes. Try not to get anybody in the eyeball with it. So this is where they're proposing that the museum be located on the site. We do have parking right here for the trailhead that's required by the Forest Service. This property did use...it used to belong to the Forest Service, was granted to Placer County for siting a public park. Off of the map here a little bit is the soccer field. You've got a children's play area, the single entrance right now, and a majority of the parking that's used for the playground and soccer field is here. And as I mentioned, this parking here is mostly used as overflow for those other spots and also for the trailhead, for the bike path and the Tahoe Rim Trail. I've got a rendering here of the...what the museum would be proposed to look like on the Squaw Valley Park Site. Again, this was provided to us by the Squaw Valley Museum Foundation. And then, a couple of years ago, as we were working with the museum foundation and other folks in the community, we identified the opportunity, and it was studied initially by the museum foundation, to look at the other kind of the gateway site. So the...on the northern entrance to Olympic Valley, where you see some commercial development right now in the Tower of Nations site, so the Tower of Nations that was constructed for the 1960 Winter Olympics is on that side, 7-Eleven building and some other commercial buildings. So the proposal...oops, I'm sorry. I went to the wrong part of the clicker. The proposal would place the museum right here on the concept plan and allow for commercial and multifamily residential development. This right here is the existing 7-Eleven site. The Poulsen family, which owns the property, has a lease with 7-Eleven for many years into the future and opportunities for extension. So the thought was that 7-Eleven would stay here until their opportunities ran out and then possibly relocate or have some 7-Eleven type of facility in the building behind, and then this building would be ultimately wiped out. That's the rendering of the concept plan with a bird's eye view. You can see the residential with the commercial below, and then the museum is right here up in the front, right behind the historic Tower of Nations. So some of the things we looked at when comparing the two sites, there...we did have quite an in-depth analysis on the gateway site that looked at the opportunities for economic development and redevelopment. And as we heard from the museum foundation, that their preference really was to go to the park site, we started looking at comparing and contrasting the two locations. So we looked at zoning restrictions, site development, utilities, and economic development potential of both sites. So the first thing we looked at was zoning, and this map shows zoning in...at both...oops, gosh darn, I keep on doing that. I'm sorry about that. Both locations. So the red zoning for a majority of the gateway parcel is entrance commercial, allows for a variety of uses, including multifamily museums, et cetera. The green zoning that you see here that is on part of the gateway site, so the part that used to be owned by the Forest Service, when the Forest Service granted us this property, you can see the square line here, this was the entire piece that was granted to the county, some of it on that north side of Squaw Valley Road. So that's all zoned forest recreation still, does not currently allow for a museum on that site. So there would be a required zoning change if the museum were to go there, and even if the museum were to...okay, come on now.
More coffee.
Yeah, or less coffee. Maybe that's my problem. Even if the museum were to go on the...on this, on the north side, the gateway parcel, this section, which is .8 acres, would need to be rezoned as well. So there would be zoning changes really required, more significant on the southern parcel. Okay, let's move on. And I do want to orient you to the colors that you're going to see on these comparison sheets for the next few slides. Yellow means caution. Green means okay to go ahead, just like a traffic signal. So on the zoning restrictions, the...as I mentioned, on the green portions where it's zoned forest recreation, the museum use is not allowed. In addition, when we accepted the property from the Forest Service, a deed restriction had been placed on that to not allow for commercial uses. Now, some folks may consider a museum a commercial use, others may not, as proposed. The museum would allow or facilitate special events in order to raise money, in order to provide a place for convening fundraisers, other community meetings. So that's something if your board would like us to consider the park site, we will have to go to the Forest Service and make a specific request to allow that to occur. And, you know, they may or may not grant it. Our thinking right now is if we were going to move forward with the north gateway site, they may be more apt to allow for that because it's already contiguous with other commercial development, but that doesn't mean that they would say no to the southern or park site. Then on the...
Jennifer, just real quick, I'm sorry.
Sure.
So just to be clear, regardless whether the north side or the south side, both require rezone, step one for both of these would be the request of the Forest Service, right?
Exactly, yes. Then on to the gateway site. It is zoned village commercial or entrance commercial. It allows for that use on a majority of the property, but not all of it, and then we would still need to get that deed restriction lifted from the portion that is currently zoned entrance commercial. Okay, and then we did some analysis on site development, and I do want to give a shout out to our facilities department and our Community Development Resources Agency. They did a lot of the work related to site development, as well as provided some feedback to us on the utilities analysis. So on land and parking, we have determined for the park site that we will need to do more studies about whether there is adequate parking or not. Because of the agreement we have with the Forest Service, we do require to have parking for the trailhead there. So whether we could continue to provide that, which is at capacity on peak days, and then also provide parking for the proposed museum, would have to be determined.
Jennifer?
Yes.
My understanding on the parking, and correct me if I'm wrong, is there's a...currently a proposal for permanent pickleball courts, which would lose, I think, five or six additional spaces?
That's correct. It would be taking some of the existing parking and then potentially require some new parking use.
Goldsler?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And that...the pickleball courts are underway right now with planning and siting and that sort of thing. And I know that our facility staff has met with the museum foundation folks to look at siting on the park site, and I think that everybody was comfortable, but there wasn't a conflict with the location of the courts, but the parking is probably a separate issue.
Yeah, and just for the board members who may not be as intimately familiar with the park as some of us up here are, the pickleball courts are proposed at the end of the loop, the turnaround, sort of behind the museum?
We also know that the park site will require a traffic study, and I'm going to go back to the slide that showed the zoning. As you can see, coming on up and down Highway 89, for anybody turning into...onto Squaw Valley Road and making a left-hand turn into the park, they're crossing existing traffic that is backed up in the wintertime. That's not a problem right now because the park is not open in the wintertime. It's only open during summer months, and that's also as required by the mitigation for the project that was studied back when the park was developed. So there would be a traffic study that would be needed because of that, the potential conflicts with existing ski traffic and wintertime traffic that we know is more significant than traffic in the summertime. Then on to the right slide. I'm having a problem with the slides today. On to the park site out...rock outcroppings. Those...there are some pretty significant boulders in that location, and it's not anything that would stop a project. It certainly could drive up the project cost. Been talking with our facility staff, they had significant boulder removal in order to get the grading flat for the parking at the park site. So a lot of those boulders are still there, and I know that with the conceptual design that the museum did, they did try to work around those boulders and try to kind of fit it into where the grade is different from the lower lot to the top lot, but that's likely to continue to be an issue that would need to be analyzed and resolved during site development. On the gateway site, there is available parking that meets codes with a development agreement. I think with all of the commercial development and multifamily that we had proposed in the concept plan, they were short a few sites, but it was something that could be handled with a variance. It was not significant. And the power lines really are the big issue on the gateway site. And I've got some pictures, pictures of those as well. So this is something that's really, as you could see on the previous slide, keeping the museum foundation from being interested in that site. Their main concern is that the power lines would inhibit interest in investors in the museum because they're not aesthetically pleasing. So, boy, you can barely see the one in this shot, so it may not have come out as clear in the PowerPoint. You can see the power poles on the other side of the highway, and then they lead up into the substation that you can see in the next photo. And the ones...a couple of the power lines on site are pretty large. Not all of them, but some of them are. So we do talk about the potential undergrounding or relocation of those in the concept plan for the gateway site. You can also see the substation here that we would want to get screened so that it was not so aesthetically displeasing. So really, the screening, the aesthetics, and the look of the high-tension lines and potential electric magnetic field coming off of the high-tension lines, although we have discussed that with the Liberty Utilities, and that doesn't seem like a significant issue to them, but, you know, different people feel differently about that topic for sure. Let me go on to utilities comparison because we did work with Liberty Let me go on to utilities comparison, because we did work with Liberty Utilities to get some different prices for relocating and undergrounding for both sites. So on all utilities, that both sites are served with water right now, so that's not an issue with either site. On the electrical lines, the park site does not have electricity in the current location where it would be needed, so that that would have to be expanded. There is electricity on site, obviously, at the Gateway site because they have existing commercial uses, but in order to underground those Liberty Utilities is estimating a $1.6 million cost. Then on sewer, I wanted to mention as well, neither site is served by sewer service right now, so that the sewer line stops west of, of both sites. Currently, we have pit toilets at, at the park site, it's served with that only. The Museum Foundation is proposing for the park site, a, a package sewer plant or sewer pump station where it can be pumped back into the sewer line, but we, we can discuss that a little bit more in detail later. It's, it would really be determined by the Squaw Valley Museum Foundation or your board, should we want to move forward with that site. So on the, the park site, power line options, two of the options are $75,000 in rerouting power lines to serve the site to the level it would need if there were a museum there. And then the third option, a cost of $200,000 to underground the lines, because I, we understand that's an aesthetic issue, and that's the estimate we got from the Liberty Utilities. And then on the Gateway site, the costs are much higher because they're higher tension lines, much more significant work required. So anywhere between just under $1 million, if we were to continue with overhead lines, as you see in option three here, dang it, these made for right-handed people, I don't know what the deal is, maybe that's it, that's what I'm going with. As much as $2.6 million if you route it from the south, or if you just go across the highway, which I think is probably the option we'd select if we wanted to underground for the Gateway site. But those certainly are costs that could be borne by the project, or that we could go after our own Rule 20 money, or potentially some grant funding to fund that and the sewer. So a lot was analyzed on the Gateway site related to economic development, and that was really the, the upside of siting the museum at the Gateway site. There was land that was offered by the Poulsen family in exchange for, with the extension of that sewer line, they would be able to more fully develop that site. So the sewer line is really integral to economic development at the Gateway, no matter if the park is on one side or another. And that's why the sewer line we're showing here with the package station would not provide the economic development potential. But even if the museum were sited at the park, and there were a sewer line extension included with that, there could be some economic development potential in general at the Gateway. So really, I think the, you know, the Gateway site is probably more inclined toward economic development potential, but the, that could be mitigated by extending the power line rather than providing the package station. And you see all the reasons here why, why the Gateway site is better economically. And then some discussion considerations that kind of came out of our analysis and that we wanted to focus on for your board to consider in your, in your discussion, the, all the pros and cons I just went through. The Museum Foundation did write us a formal letter to our department on August 29th and then followed it up with some clarification that their preference is really to go with the park site and not the Gateway site, for the reasons previously stated. So they, they really would like to move forward on that site, and that's, that's the request that they have sent us. We do have a, I think, a threshold question before we get into a, a lot of discussion about do we honor the request to move forward or not, about whether the county policy does allow for private use on our park properties. And then additional allocation of county resources, including staff. We haven't allocated a lot of funding other than the TOT funding over the years, but certainly between County Executive Office, Economic Development, SEDRA, and Facilities, we've spent a lot of staff time on analyzing these options and would continue to do so with the development of a museum, likely on either site, but certainly more so on our property. Ongoing operation and maintenance, that's something that we'd want to work out with the Squaw Valley Ski Museum Foundation if they were to cite the museum on the park, because ultimately, if it's on our property, we'd be responsible for it. And then I guess really the only caveat, and I wanted to bring it up because there is a proposal on the table right now to incorporate Olympic Valley, and this park is within that site. So it does, in staff's mind, bring up an interesting question of whether we develop this site further, place a museum on it, expend a lot of resources, and then turn it over to the new town, which may or may not have wanted a museum on that site. So it's something that we wanted to at least make sure that your board was aware of and considered as part of its package. So that's it for my presentation, and I know...
Before we get into any of the discussion items, are there any questions by board members regarding this presentation? Because we do have an opportunity to hear from the museum folks on their presentation that will evaluate merits after we hear from the museum folks. So are there any questions in regard to the presentation we've heard so far?
I have two technical or clarifying questions on the presentation, and I don't see Alex Fish here today, which is too bad. My understanding is, love it or hate it, part of KSL's proposal for the Village project is that they would bring sewer to the park as part of their mitigations and use of requirements for park improvements. Are you aware of that?
I did ask Alex about that because I'd heard that come up before, and that has, there is no final determination on that. I don't know that they've offered that particularly. It's on a list of potential things, but, you know, it's going to, it's going to make a big impact on their dollars into mitigation and up to your board and them on negotiating that amount.
Absolutely. And then you mentioned Rule 20, and those are the dollars that are available for undergrounding of utilities. So two questions on Rule 20. The first is, I know we specifically collect dollars internally at the county, any idea how much we actually have on hand for Rule 20 work?
Boy, I wish I knew the answer to that question, I just do not. I can find out for you. We don't have enough, I can tell you, to do this project at this site. We may have enough or close and make up the difference if we relocated some of the money that we have allocated in the queue, because we have a, a long-term plan, but then that would negatively impact other communities. But your board could certainly make, you know, a priority decision that this was more important than undergrounding, let's say, Carnegie Bay on the highway, or...
And Rule 20, and David, maybe you can, because I know you and I've talked about Rule 20 in the past, Rule 20 is intended for main roads that are, have scenic designations primarily, is that correct?
Not sure about the requirement for scenic designation per se, but clearly major roads that have a lot of visibility and, as a result, aesthetic concerns associated with those overhead lines.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. The, the questions in regard to your presentation that I have, would you show the, the Gateway proposed map, that one?
That one?
Especially as you move toward the back of the property, fairly significant slopes, a lot of cut and fill. Has there been any analysis done of costs associated with preparing that site for actual development from a building pad standpoint?
There was not. We really felt that it was up to the property owner and developer to bear those costs, so we did not do that analysis.
The, in your presentation, you mentioned the cost associated with moving some boulders on the south side, but clearly some very significant site cost constraints associated with preparing the north side as well. To your point about the, the developer, the Pousons have offered land, has there been any commercial developers that have expressed interest in actually developing out a project, a commercial project at this site?
I know they have a real estate representative who has talked with a variety of developers. I mean, I, I think they haven't taken the next step because there's no sewer line to that site, and they really think that that would be the catalyst for potential development, and without that catalyst, they have not been extremely active in outreach, but they've certainly had some interest, but the sewer has been, been what stood in the way. But I, I can't tell you the level of interest or how many people have contacted them, I do know of some.
Just occurs to me that with how much commercial footage is available there, if commercial were viable there today, we would have seen some redevelopment of that site already. And you're talking about a fairly aggressive commercial project there, and I'm just wondering why the market hasn't already taken care of it if, in fact, there's a demand for that kind of a commercial presence on that corner.
I think it's a $1.6 million sewer price tag.
Okay.
Makes it hard to pencil.
All right, thank you. That's all the questions I had in your presentation. We'll get into the discussion of the merits after we have the presentation from the museum folks.
And Bill, is this the...
That's all we need.
Okay, great.
Thank you. I'm, I'm Bill Clark, I'm president of the Museum Foundation. Thanks for addressing this again. We're back, we've been at this for about seven years now. Obviously, we're at a crossroads. You all know the scope of the project, everybody gets it. An Olympic legacy that's not been represented, a California winter sports legacy up and down the Sierras, it goes all the way back to the Gold Rush. It's a tremendous opportunity to do something very special in our region, to take Placer County's rightful place as the center of the ski industry and the winter sports culture in the West. So everybody gets that. It all really comes down to location right now. So that's what we're here to do today. We've studied it for years, we've done several different analyses of the TON now, we've had different experts look at it. So I think all the due diligence is done, and it's really decision time. And for us, what it really comes down to is where can we be successful? Where can we create a cultural, historical institution that is there and thriving when the 100th anniversary of the Squaw Valley Games comes around? And in our opinion, the opinion of all our experts, everybody that we've talked to, the Squaw Valley Park is the ideal location. It's a location that you couldn't dream of having any better. It's, it's connected to the Games, it's still neutral enough that the rest of the ski industry can get behind it, all the other stories of all the other ski resorts up and down the Sierras. And it's that Gateway thing that, that visitors and the community will see when they come into the North Shore. So it's got absolutely everything going for it. In terms of the Gateway site, we looked at that many times over, and the power lines and the substation and the proximity to the commercial developments, we feel is, we would not be successful. We don't think we'd be successful right from the get-go raising the money for it. So that's why we're back, and that's why we're saying all our cards are on the, the park site at this point. So I'm happy to answer any questions, anything that would, any questions you have that need answered before you can make a decision? Now's the time to ask them. We feel like we're at the top of the course, and the countdown's starting, and it's all the course is laid out. I'm, I have to admit, I'm a little corny with ski racing analogies. But, and there's a lot of gates ahead, and we have to make all the gates, but it's there. And if we get to the finish line, together with a partnership with Placer County, and we can, we can cite this in the park to the benefit of the public and the visitors, to the benefit of the park users, work with the other park users to make it so it's a multi-use facility there, we think it's a win-win. So, yes.
I saw a couple of questions, so...
So you're...
There you go.
So you're telling us that you have a project that's ready to go, in your mind?
We have a concept that's ready to go. There's a lot to be done. We have to go out and raise money for this. I mean, that's, that's the first thing we've got to do. We can't go raise money without a site, and that's been the hang-up for years right now.
So with regards to raising money and the costs, and, and I'm not a, an economist, but it seems to me that the other gateways more costly theoretically at this point, putting them face-to-face than the park site, is that an accurate description?
Yeah, I think, I think it is. I mean, the, we call them power lines, but they're really transmission lines, they're, they're high-voltage transmission lines. So they're, they're not going away. And whether we, we find a way to work around them, which we don't believe is, is feasible, because they just bisect that piece of property right down the middle, or you put them underground, there's no difference. You put them underground, you still can't build over the top of them, so the footprint of the building is pushed towards the commercial development.
And previously, we had some discussion about some slope that hasn't been studied on the other, on the Gateway site versus moving around some rocks or building around rocks, is that correct?
Well, you know, the architects we've been working with think the rocks are fantastic, and they're going to incorporate them into the design. I, I don't know if there's another site, are you saying on the, the park site?
On the north side.
On the north side.
The slopes issue.
So we don't know if we have to put fill-in, bring in, or you have to put fill-in truck, you know, dig deeper, dig higher?
You saw in the illustration that the footprint that came from the, the county staff's Gateway study cites the footprint of the museum right smack on the highway, right smack up against the power lines, and right across the street from the 7-11 store. And that's a dead flat lot, so I don't think there's any big site.
Okay. And then we have the issue with sewer.
Yeah, and we've known that from the get-go.
Okay, and that's applicable to both sides?
Yep.
Okay.
And we knew we'd have to shoulder that cost.
And with regards to any possible annexation, I'm only going to go there, or, you know, incorporation, there are, and let me, this is a question for Jerry. Jerry? There are, there are ways to resolve those kinds of things before a, a city is created, right?
Yeah, and the, and the city would take subject to any agreements, or the town would take subject to any agreements...
That's like a tax share and all those kinds of things, right? Okay.
The question was whether, how, whether how much of this could be completed before that incorporation, then it would be the city's transaction to pursue.
Okay, I think that's all I've got.
Okay. So, just to finish, I mean, we're looking for, for decisions, some leadership on this. Where do we go next? Show us the path. I think I understand what you're looking for today. Sue Reiser-Holmes?
Bill, I just had a question, thanks for being here today. Have you had any preliminary discussions with the US Forest Service of whether they'll even allow a museum on that park site?
We did. We did that in our 2012 revised concept. We went to the regional forester and explained the project to them, and there's a letter in that proposal from the regional forester basically saying, they don't care. It's, it's Placer County's decision to make. That was the gist of what they said.
All right, good.
So we understand you have to go back and do that again, but that, that was from the regional forester.
Right, okay, thank you.
Okay, I don't think there are any other questions of you at this time.
Thank you.
So I think what we're going to do is open it up for public comment, any members of the public want to address the board on this item, or if there's taking any action or providing any direction to staff.
Hello again, I'm Ed Henneville, I'm a 38-year resident here. I was, when my kids were playing soccer, 25 years ago, 20 years ago, we were looking for a place to have a soccer field, and we looked all over the place, going back 25 years, we've been looking for a site. The recreational amenities were incredibly minimal here, and we were looking from anything from a top lot to setting it up Shirley Canyon, and finally, through an act of Congress, literally, we got the 34 acres of the Squaw Valley Park, and it's, it's iconic for Placer County and for Squaw Valley. We, we worked really hard to get this, and I think the concept was, and I was instrumental early on, and my memory is good on this, that it is a recreational park, not a, not a place for commercial entities. You've heard that about the deed restriction. These museum folks have a good idea, but I just sit on the other side of that currently with my opinion of where the thing should be located. The park is in the tremendous asset, and this is a risk, there's no guarantee this is going to be successful. You have to be aware of that coming down the road. There's no, the Gateway site is feasible, I'd love to get rid of the blight that's at the entrance. The power line's going underground, that's a little disingenuous for Bill to say that, you know, he can't put a building over them. You can move that power line closer to the main road, you can cite it around where they can still get their Tower of Nations site. You can cite it around where they can still get their Tower of Nation site. As a quick aside, there's a third site that I've been asking you guys to evaluate since January, and I'm a little disappointed that Jennifer Murchin and all haven't looked at that. Can we have that other slider here? Be that Jennifer? It's the one, the gateway site, yeah. So... Sorry. Right here, there's a current development going in that's offering two acres, possibly doing public service, just to cite their big tank. But it'd be a perfect site in that we've, it's undeveloped, it is on the main road where these guys say they have to have their entrance museum. And it's not been evaluated. So it's away from the power lines, it's undisturbed land, the owner is interested in the concept. It hasn't been explored. So I don't mean to throw monkey wrench into this, but it's disingenuous to say there's only two places. There's a third place. KSL has offered these guys property, a location up in the village. And during the 2009 charade, which I called the charade, where about 100 people came to the resort here to talk about where do we want to site this museum, a lot of people said, "Let's put it at Ground Zero, right at the Olympics." Why not? Again, there were some false choices made, in my opinion. And stop. May I continue?
Briefly, if you would.
All right. So, yeah, Ground Zero is another concept of putting it up in the, where you can actually see the downhill event sites. Let me just quickly look at my notes here. The park is deed restricted from 2000 Department of Agriculture. You've identified that concern. It's built for summer use only. And this has come up in 2005 when the Ski Corp wanted to plow that area and make it a parking lot for their overflow parking or a place. The community rejected that idea. We promised, "We" meaning supervisor Rex Bloomfield, Placer County, John Ramirez, promised those Tavern Inn homeowners, which are right next to the current park, that we would have no nighttime activities, no lights, minimum noise, minimum impact, and no... This would change that. Again, the 2009 charade that actually said, and they took a vote there, Jennifer was there. Where do you want to locate it? Do you want to put it in the park or do you want to put it on the north side? The majority of people there said, "On the north side." I guess that's, and that was overwhelming.
Would you try to conclude your comments?
And then the last point would be, if you are going to try to put that museum in the park, I think it should come back to what we did in 2009, have a community forum, not just you five, not that I don't trust you, but you need to hear from the community of Squaw Valley. This is our legacy, and these guys have one vision for it, and I think the Olympic Museum is an okay idea, but I think the community needs to have a say in this. I would vote for another town forum or some other where, place, venue where you could hear not just Bill Clark talking, not just me talking, but the community of Squaw Valley.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else, any other members of the public wish to address the board on this item? I see one gentleman right, and another one here. Go ahead, sir. Come on up.
Yes, this is Carl Gustafson, a 50-year resident. In addition to be a professional civil engineer, I'm also a licensed land surveyor. And since the 1960s, I've had opportunities in serving that area and also in other areas of Squaw Valley, around the Ski Corp and the Papu Ski area. In my opinion, both of these sites are a bad idea. I'm very uncomfortable with the traffic safety and got sewer problems, traffic, and water and visual problems there. And my opinion, a better, from a personal standpoint, it's a park. And a friend of mine, Pam Raka, she's a, she was an elected public official, she got a memorial bench there right where the museum is supposed to be. So from a personal point of view, I don't like to see the museum parked right on top of her bench there. From a practical point of view, why I think the best appropriate, best location would be at the base of the Papu Ski area where the Olympics were held, right at the base of the Kemp Hill, and also the Olympic House where we used to have those movies that are up there. That could be, we brought that up before, but I'm very uncomfortable with this location. Mainly from, you see all the traffic going in and out of there. I just think it's a much better location to have, having a museum up close to the ski areas. That's my personal opinion.
Thank you.
As usual, there's a lot of different opinions about anything you want to propose. My name's Alan Christian. I'm here representing the Far West Ski Association and the Far West Ski Foundation, which is the fundraising arm of that organization. Last month in our convention, Far West covers most of the western states, a resolution was passed that I want to read you. Whereas preserving western ski legacy is a historic purpose of Far West, and whereas the Western America Ski Sport Museum is the principal repository of California ski history, and whereas the Squaw Valley Ski Museum will house the Western America Ski Sport Museum material, and whereas the new museum will be the public face of Far West ski legacy, therefore be it resolved that Far West Ski Association and its 50,000 members enthusiastically support the development effort. The action that was given to me was to present that to you, and I'll do that today. All right, so that's from the Far West Ski Association. From me, I'm the president of Christian Power Equipment. I find myself in front of boards like you when we're looking at building power plants throughout the West, so I think I'm familiar with what you're faced with here. I'm the past chairman of the Board of Trustees of Far West Ski Association, past FIS representative for the US Ski Team to the World Congress, past vice president of the US Ski Association. In the mid-'80s, my company, Recreational Sports Marketing, was instrumental in introducing snowboarding to ski areas and their insurers, which turned out to be the big hurdle for that new part of the sport. We conducted over 100 events, special one-day events, to lead the open and to introduce snowboarding to ski areas. That followed, the following year, over 40 areas decided to open to ski board, to snowboarding. The first demonstration day was just over the ridge here at Alpine Meadows. I've been fortunate since the early '60s to observe the ski industry. But for Placer County, for more than 100 years before I even joined this great sport, your county has played an important role in the development of skiing, not just in the West, but probably in the world. Starting with races in the gold mining camps, Snowshoe Thompson crisscrossing the Sierras through Placer County delivering mail to snowbound camps, Wendell Robey, who I hope that you all know, I'm sure, orchestrating state funding for snow removal in Placer County roads, and then hosting the 1931 national championships right here, the Squaw Valley Olympics. This county has played a central role in this sport. Not only that, there's a fertile development ground right here in this valley for international champions. Names like Jimmy Huga, the Paulson family, Tamara McKinney, Shane McConkey, Julia Mancuso, Darren Ralphs, Johnny Mosley, the list is so long, it's not really fair to name anyone. Royal Gorge and Auburn Ski Club stand really near the top of the Nordic ski industry. Some rightfully contend that Squaw Valley is the best big mountain off-piece skiing in the lower 48.
Sir, can I ask you to...
I've got one paragraph, and I'm done. Now I think Placer County has an opportunity to step forward, share an existing park, and establish a center dedicated to the past glories of this great sport, as well as educate future generations of high country enthusiasts with the ski legacy that's so rich here in the West. The proposed location will attract visitors, key artifacts are largely collected, experienced leadership is ready. The proposed location, as Wendell Robey oft stated in his memoir, "The world was young and anything was possible." Well, I believe anything is still possible. We need Placer County to join in the effort to get this project moving and step forward. Thank you.
Thank you. To the court, please. Thank you very much.
Thanks for bearing with my old...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Ellie Waller, Tahoe Vista resident. I wasn't going to comment on this today, but I do agree with Ed about transparent community outreach. There's a possibility, it sounds like, for two additional sites, the one in the village and now the new identified site. And you need to ask yourselves, when was the last time the community was engaged in looking at these sites because there are two more? Thank you.
After this gentleman, is there anybody else that wants to speak? Okay, we do have a few others. Okay.
Good morning again. Rob Weston, West Shore. Everyone agrees it's extremely important to our community that we build a museum to celebrate the history and legacy of our Olympic heritage, as well as the rich story of winter sports here in Placer County and the surrounding counties. I think you all agree with that. But the proposed museum at the park will feature far more than the eighth Winter Olympic Games at Squaw Valley, which is the reason I feel that having a museum in Squaw Valley will not do all of us justice. It's bigger than just the Squaw Valley Olympics, not to take any away from them. We're talking about the history of this area. If the interest and national press were received during the 50th anniversary of the 1960 Olympics in 2010, as any indication, our new winter sports heritage and Olympic museum will be a huge success if it's located in the park. You've all heard that the Squaw Valley Ski Museum Foundation really can't make the Tower of Nation site work. The biggest elephant in that room is obviously the power lines. An Olympic museum in the park, on the other hand, would be successful because we'd be able to raise funds. It'll be there for generations unencumbered by commercial developments. That's another situation with the gateway site, the commercial aspect of it. People refer to the museum as a commercial project. I disagree with that. If you look at a lot of the great museums in California, like Delmore Park, like Golden Gate Park, a park is a perfect location for a museum. People can recreate, go to the museum, and vice versa. They can recreate, they can probably go to the museum and then also see the recreational aspects. We're asking you to embrace this county's legacy and establish Placer County's place in western winter sports culture and Olympic history. We'd like you to partner with the Squaw Valley Ski Museum Foundation, providing a footprint in the park for public benefit. It's really about the location, because people will see it as they drive south. Most of our people coming here to Lake Tahoe and to Squaw Valley are coming down Highway 9. As they see the museum in the park, it's a natural thing, they can turn in. It'll actually drive more business in the Squaw Valley. It'll also drive business down to Tahoe City and down the West Shore where, you know, my love is. And of course, the West Shore is where the 1960 Olympics, all the cross-country Nordic events were held there. So we need, from the West Shore's point of view, we need people to be able to understand that they can go into Squaw, or come to Tahoe City, or go down the West Shore. So really, the park location, from our perspective, my perspective especially, is the best location. So I would appreciate your consideration and approval of that site. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I saw at least three other hands raised.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. Thank you for letting me have this opportunity. My name is Bill Lindeman. I'm with California State Parks. For 10 years, I was the Sierra District Museum Curator II, and then for the subsequent 19 years, the Regional Interpretive Specialist. My key involvement most recently is the development of the new visitor center in Donner Memorial State Park. We have 14 parks in the Sierra District. Eight of those parks are in Placer County wholly or in park, and of those eight parks, four of those parks are destinations. Those destination parks return over $4 million in visitor expenditures into the local economy, so not a small deal. Important for the board, I think, to consider the development of this new venture. I think it's a beautiful addition to our community and to the heritage of the area that I interpret and that we present to our visitors. I can't speak for one location or the other, because I intend to be somewhat neutral in my affiliation, but I can tell you that at Donner Memorial State Park, we went through a very similar process investigating whether we were going to put the new visitor center into retail development, primarily retail commercial development, or into the park along Donner Pass Road, which was made thoroughfare for the park and connectivity to the other parts of the park, and the history that we present, and we chose that selection to place it within the park. It's not unusual. Many of our parks have visitor centers within them, but many of them are also purely natural and recreational. I just wanted to come here and support the Museum Foundation, and thank you for considering me. Thank you.
My name is Don Williams. Been a Tahoe City resident for 53 years. Had the good fortune of being a founding partner of the Moana Company, which developed Tahoe Tavern, Tavern Shores, Chincopin, several other major projects in the West Shore. I urge the board to favorably consider the park location. It is absolutely the finest location we can hope to have. And the idea that there aren't parks, or shouldn't be museums in parks, is ridiculous. I go to San Francisco frequently, and my, one of my favorite places to visit is the Golden Gate Park, which has several great museums. And one of my previous speakers from the West Shore mentioned the same thing. So I think that makes it a very special location. So I feel proud to support the park location. I know most of the people that I know in the Tahoe City area, including the developments I mentioned, favor the park location. So I urge this board to favorably consider the park location for the museum. Thank you.
Thank you. And ma'am, you'd raised your hand when I asked if there was anybody else that wanted to speak, just wanted to speak. Is there anybody else that wants to address the board on this item? Really?
This was, this is an unplanned speech, but I just want to respond to some of the comments I heard. First of all, I'm a longtime resident of Lake Tahoe. I'm on the board of the museum, and I wouldn't be on that board if I wasn't interested in this whole project and have looked at it from many aspects from the very beginning. And I want to talk about, first of all, answering the charade that was, that we put forward to the public years ago. That plan has been discarded long ago, and I remember sitting at the charade and afterwards, myself, thinking that the Tower of Nation site was equally interesting as the park site. And I talked to numerous people who thought that. Most of us thought that because we thought, wouldn't it be nice if that side of the road looked as beautiful as the park side? And I have to thank Ed and all the people in Squaw Valley who helped bake that little part, because it is very attractive. It is a gem. And wouldn't it be nice if both sides were equally attractive? However, I don't believe putting a museum over there is going to change the appearance of that side of the road. The other thing, that side of the road is private property, and if there are a museum there with or without power lines, we would have no control over the future development of what was around then. A museum in a shopping center or a mall is something I can't imagine. And I hope that most people here know that we did have a site committee for many years in Squaw Valley, and we had, we tried to have a cross-section of the public involved. We discussed, had pros and cons up valley and all over, and we did come to a vote at the end unanimously for the park site. And we did certainly study the Tower of Nation site. And last, I want to say, I'm also on the board of the Community of Riders here, and we have a constant conflict, not a conflict, try to work with KSL in Squaw Valley to have the Riders Conference every summer and every year. the Riders Conference every summer and every year. We're conflicted by cheerleaders, wanderlust, mutters, all kinds of conventions, who knows what they'll think up next. And if there was a park up the, if we had a museum in the valley, we would have no control over all of those activities. It would also be inaccessible in winter to anyone who wasn't in there to ski, because anyone who isn't skiing does not want to face that traffic. So there are many reasons why Up Valley would be, it would be inaccessible to most of the public in the winter, but also for fundraising, since this is not just an Olympic museum, but a Northern California History Museum, being out at the entrance is an obvious advantage. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing nobody else that wants to come up and speak. I'm sorry, was there somebody else that wanted to come up and speak?
Mother man.
If you must, Ron.
I'll start with an oxymoron of...
Ron, in brief.
Yeah.
Ron Trivis with the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association.
Thank you.
No recommendation on the site, but what I do want to encourage you is to move the project on, whatever your decision is. And if there is needs for further study or whatever, I think that to give the foundation a direction and the requirement of what they need to do would be very helpful. This actually all did start in 2007, when we were with Placer County Funds studying the need for visitor information at the entrance to Squaw Valley. And that has been put on hold since then in order to be able to combine it if this was going to happen. The funds that have been presented by the board have been used with oversight by us. We've been involved in everything that the Museum Foundation has done. It's been done very professionally and thoroughly, as has been the look at the north site that Ward Young studied thoroughly and gave the information. So I really believe you have the information to make a decision and to let this project continue on. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Supervisor Duran, yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was going to say, thanks for the help, Ron, and Jess, but you actually did help me kind of codify my thought here. We just experienced, what, the 50th year of the games here?
2010.
And if we don't make a decision, it'll be another 50 years before you have a museum. There is a reason why I went through the list of pros and cons to talk about what site and just to illustrate that there's an opportunity here. If that other site, the Gateway Site, was a site that could be developed, it probably would be developed. But something tells me that if we cite a museum across the street, that there's probably a strong likelihood that that parcel is going to get snapped up for commercial development. As far as this whole commercial nonprofit thing, that doesn't really move me because it's a lot different than putting a McDonald's on that corner. I think it's something that is vibrant. I think it's something that's going to be for the community. I would disagree that you want it at the back of Olympic Ballody, because if you think that you have problems now, when you have this proposed other development that's happening at the back there, you're going to have even more traffic than you can desire. You know, we're always faced with hard decisions, and I think that this pathway for me is very clear. And I'm going to motion that we move with the project as has been requested, and, you know, with the hopes that they can pull it off. And if that site doesn't work off, maybe we will be across the street. But we have to do something, and that's my motion.
Okay, so there's a motion. Do we have a second for...
Mr. Chair, I have some comments.
Yeah, I just want to see if there's a second on the motion, and then we'll go ahead and open it up for discussion on the motion.
Yeah, I'll second that with a few comments if it's okay, Mr. Chair.
There will absolutely be comments. I mean, since we do have now a motion on the floor, let's go ahead. Supervisor Montgomery, with your comments, please.
Yeah, so as I think everyone in this room is very aware, I have always said, and I've always taken the position, that the park site would be the last option that we would look at, that it was never off the table, but that it would absolutely be the last site when all other sites had been explored and found to be infeasible. And what I heard today is that the 7-Eleven site is not infeasible, and in fact, that it would bring greater economic and community development revitalization benefits to the area. So to me, the 7-Eleven site still makes much more sense. I was there for the 2009 charrette that a number of folks referred to today. At that charrette, there was a very clear preference for something on 89. It was done just by a show of hands, wasn't scientific, but the question was asked, should it be in the valley? Show of hands, out of the valley at 89. Clear preference for out of the valley. The question was then asked, should it be on the park site, or should it be on the 7-Eleven site? Equally clear preference for the 7-Eleven site at that point. That is the only, to get to Ellie's point, really public conversation that's been had about this to date. If this board should take what I consider to be the wrong action to move forward with the park site today, it's going to go to the max. We're going to have robust public input into this to make sure that this is indeed something the community supports. Because I will tell you, based on the charrette, and based on the people who have approached me about this, the clear preferences for the 7-Eleven site for many, many reasons. It's a win for everybody. And I think the opportunity that we have is to create a win for everyone here, and that would be the 7-Eleven site. The Tower of Nations site has some other very specific positive things going for it. It does have the Tower of Nations as compared to the park site, which has the, what I refer to as the Tower of Services. I can't imagine the free publicity, the benefits that would accrue to the museum on the 7-Eleven site, with everyone taking those pictures of the Tower of Nation and immediately behind it with fabulous and appropriate signage, a beautiful museum. Between Instagram and Facebook, the museum would have more publicity than you could ever buy. The Visitors Information Center, Ron referred to that on Trivis, the Visitors Information Center at Squaw was intended a number of years ago to be placed on the 7-Eleven site. It was intended to be immediately adjacent to the bus stop, which has been built there. And so, again, a museum with a visitor's center on the 7-Eleven site was actually not envisioned as a museum, but was envisioned as a visitor's center by the county and the community many, many years ago, and has been on hold largely because of this project coming forward. We do now have the bus stop there. It's a fabulous new bus stop. The 7-Eleven site has two roads coming in and out of it, which would create many fewer traffic conflicts than the one. And Eddie said something that I'm 100% in agreement with, which is both sides should look good. This is the opportunity, if we say, don't focus on the park, focus on the 7-Eleven site, work with us, work with private business, work with private enterprise, and let's make a fabulous set of bookends for the park. Let's have a beautiful, for the valley, I should say, let's have a beautiful park on one side, let's have a beautiful museum on the other side, and let's bring benefit to everybody, not just folks who would really like to be in the park. I understand wanting to be in the park. I want to build a house in Yosemite Valley, but it's not appropriate. What is appropriate, and what I would ask my board, is to support the 7-Eleven site today. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Holmes?
Yeah, thank you. The reason why I supported this motion goes way back. I actually knew Wendell Robey, and I'm no Wendell Robey, I'll tell you that right now. But I, driving up here, I started talking to him, you know, saying, what would he do? What would he say? And I can envision him, the little wiry little guy that would walk into the room, and everybody who knew Wendell Robey was in the room, he'd come up to this podium and say, what the Sam hell are you guys waiting for? You've got a foundation board that's all ready to go. What's the holdup here? So that's why I'm supporting the motion. Wendell Robey did so much to bring the Olympics to Squaw Valley, to get Interstate 80 built, to make sure there was a way to get to the Olympic Museum, or Olympics, the Olympics. So anyhow, that's why I support the motion. I think it's time to move forward. Let the foundation move forward and see what they can do to bring this project together. There's so much history in Sierra Nevada Mountains and Placer County, where it just needs to be put on, where everybody can share it and see it. So that's why I support the motion.
Thank you, Supervisor Holmes. The idea of project feasibility has been brought up quite a bit. Simply put, nothing gets built if the money can't be raised properly. Doesn't happen on the north side, doesn't happen on the south side if they're not successful in raising the money. What we're hearing from the people that are tasked with raising the money is, we will be successful on the south side. There's absolutely no harm to the county in giving them a shot. See if they can be successful raising the money on the south side. Do what we can to cooperate with their efforts to see if they're going to be successful and make this happen. Simple fact of the matter is, while the conceptual Gateway Site is a good idea, there is not the kind of population base in the area that will support that much commercial square footage on a ongoing basis. Just doesn't exist. If you want to put a bunch of condos and things like that there, maybe you got something. But there is not the demand for that kind of commercial square footage in this area. All you have to do is go into Tahoe City and look at the opportunities for commercial, for redevelopment that doesn't have anywhere near the kind of site constraints and costs, that actually has a population base that it can serve right in the area. And it's not happening there, unfortunately. Now, obviously, the lake has some constraints that we don't have here. But like Supervisor Duran, I believe that if this were viable, that north side were viable, we wouldn't see what we see out there today in terms of the built environment out there today. You would already see things moving forward there. Certainly, there's a sewer cost on either side. I get that. This notion, though, of parks and museums, and are they compatible, is it a commercial unit? It's 1.9 miles from the steps of the United States Capitol to the Washington Monument, the National Mall, perhaps the most visited park that we have, with the Smithsonian Museum built right on it, drawing people to the park and to the Smithsonian. So to think that parks and museums aren't compatible, I think we have quite a history in this country that proves that otherwise. But really, what this comes down to for me is, the people who we're going to rely on, if there's going to be a museum anywhere, the people that we're going to rely on to raise the money are telling us, the only place we believe we can be successful in raising the money is on that site. They have no ulterior motive here. There's no financial gain for any of them. They have a mission. They want to build a museum, and they're asking us for our help in bringing this through to fruition. So for that reason, I'll support Supervisor Duran's motion.
If I may, if I may...
I just wanted to see if we could add some direction to the motion. You know, the threshold question before this board today was whether a ski museum is consistent with the current park use of the property. If, up to this point, if you'd asked staff, staff would have said, no, it's not consistent. But the board is the group that makes that consistency finding. So as part of this motion, I would ask that you direct staff to develop a master plan for the park that incorporates the ski museum, and to determine if any zoning changes are required in order to do that. And then to obtain an opinion from the Forest Service on the consistency of this use with the deed restriction for the park.
I will amend my motion to reflect those two additions. My final comment is more to Supervisor Montgomery's concerns. The group that is entering this endeavor will know very quickly whether or not the public is going to support that endeavor. And I guarantee you that if they can't raise the money on that site, there's going to be a revisitation to this other site, or somewhere else that's more appropriate, you know. They'll know very quickly. So I think that in that vetting of the public discourse that is going to occur moving forward, you're going to know pretty quickly where you're at.
Just for consistency of the record, the maker of the motion amended the motion to include the concerns from council. Does the second concur?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'll call for roll call, boys.
Duran?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Montgomery?
No.
You all are.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, our 30-minute item that went 70 minutes has now taken us to our next timed item, which is a, what am I supplementing? Yeah, 10:15 timed item, and this is an update of strategic initiative action plans. No, sorry, Ross. No, our 10:15, West Shore at 10...
30.
30? Yeah. So I'm bouncing between two pages here.
Good morning. Michael Johnson with the Community Development Resource Agency. As the board is aware, much of the work up here at Tahoe involves cooperation with the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency. This morning, we have John Hester with the agency here to present an overview of the strategic plan that group is working forward on over the next five-year period. With that, John Hester will make that presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, board members. He's your executive. I think Michael already skipped you through about half of my presentation.
Uh-oh.
See if I go backwards. Thank you for having me here. I'm John Hester, Chief Operating Officer for TRPA. I'd like to review our five-year initiatives with you. Michael told me to keep it to two and a half hours.
Not funny.
That's prior to public comment.
Every year, our board gets together and, much like I'm sure your board does, sets annual priorities in a strategic planning retreat. This year, we decided to make significant progress on some of our initiatives, and some of our objectives, and our strategic priorities. It would be better to look a little longer. So this was the framing question our board was given. What are the most significant things we can do over the next five years that will make a significant difference over the next 50? So with that, our board went into their retreat. The slide shows our strategic objectives, which come out of our vision and mission. So there are four areas there. I'm not going to read them to you, but the board identifies for 2015 to 2025 priority areas that they thought we should work with. Those are addressing legacy land uses. As you know, a lot of the land use development of the lake is very old, been there since before TRPA. A lot of our regulations are closing development, or slower than a lot. Funding of the environmental improvement program, a lot of activities that our partners do there. Climate-related shoreline changes that we need to look at that, look at non-outer transportation, and make sure, of course, we're using investigative data and science. As you may know, the states of Nevada and California just created a bi-state science advisory council, so we want to work with that. From those five priority areas came these 10 initiatives, which you can see related to each of these.
Excuse me, one second. If the conversation in this room is quiet, and what I'm hearing is the hall, can we shut the doors, please? We're getting a lot of noise up here. Thank you. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No problem. So these are the, from the five priorities areas, these are the 10 initiatives that our board has asked us to work on, to put together action plans for. And what I'd do is go through each of those priorities and action plans. And I want to set a little bit of the stage, and that is, what is TRPA about, and how do we get it done, and why? The why is to achieve and maintain thresholds. The bi-state compact between the two states is what Congress agreed was for us to maintain and achieve thresholds for the lake, for the lake to be as good as it is or better. To do that, we're mandated to prepare a regional plan and code, and then we implement that, not just us, but our partners. So we implement that through permitting. You're our partner in permitting. We have a memorandum of understanding where we delegate some of that to you. You're our partner through doing, your area plan that you're doing is making a lot of progress, and that we will even delegate more authority to you after that is done. We also implement through our partners that do projects and programs. Again, we're one of our partners. Everything's like your complete street project on the West Shore. Just more water things that you do, your TMPL. So all of that works together, all of us collaborating to make the lake a better place. So that's kind of the context within which we look at these action plans. So our first priority area I mentioned was these legacy land uses. Again, we have a lot of development that's 50-plus years old, and it's very difficult with our current regulations to restore the... with our current regulations to restore the areas that we think need to be restored. It's very difficult for redevelopment to happen. We're working with a proposal, as you all, I'm sure, know, in the Tahoe City area for a hotel project there, and learning a lot about the impediments that some of our regulations and procedures cause. We're not talking about relaxing any standards, but we're talking about making them work better so that we can bring people in who will best improve the community and the lake the way they want to. So our very first of the 10 initiatives is what we call commodities. As you may or may not know, almost everything at the lake is commoditized, if that's a word. We've got hotel rooms and residential units and coverage on the ground and so forth. And we found out that not only are those hard to move between jurisdictions, but they're also hard to move between types. And it's actually created a lot of barriers to redevelopment. We have some successes that the picture shows of buying land and, or moving development off of land and creating much nicer areas, and we want to continue to do that. So we're looking to look with stakeholders at that process of how we can improve that commodities process. A second initiative, and this probably seems a little familiar to you, because we took seriously the work that you did with EPS on barriers to redevelopment to the lake. The city of South Lake Tahoe can do a similar effort, and so both of those identify the need for us and local governments to work together to develop sort of welcome mat for permitting. How do you, we can talk to what's involved, and so we've identified a number of things to do there. We have initiated a continuous improvement process internally at TRPA, so we're looking at a lot of our processes, but we also want to look at best practices around the country and see if there are other ways we can achieve the same objective that make more sense. We want to create a customers group to open that, and we can do that in conjunction with you all and the other local governments of the lake, also a staff-to-staff group. And I will say that I've already had discussions with a number of your staff, and we're very willing to do that, and we appreciate that. And also, maybe even go to the point of the site, approve the sites that everybody wants. So we're not sure what all of those things will entail, but that's what we have in mind for the welcome mat. Area plans, I think you're probably very familiar with this. This is our third initiative, and what we're talking about here is, how can we help the local governments implement the regional plan, update their local plans, and in the process, as I mentioned, when the area plans are done, turnovers and the permitting, creating a one-stop shop, creating one contact, making the environmental redevelopment. We want to see the lake happen in a more effective and efficient way. I'm sure you'll hear more about these classic area plans over time. The second priority area is, as I mentioned, funding for the environmental improvement projects and programs that we have, much like you have a capital improvements program, we've created a thing called an environmental improvement program that's now been copied by other organizations. And three of the main areas in our environmental improvement program involve funding for forest health, funding for aquatic invasive species control, and stormwater operation and maintenance. So those are the three initiatives under that. The fuels and the fencible space treatment, this is a picture of a controlled burn in the Inca Village area, to the degree that we can help the Forest Service, they manage most of the land in the Tahoe Basin, that's one of our objectives. We also work with the Tahoe Fire Fuels Team, and there's a working group that works on protecting the wildlife urban interface and fencible space, so that's a big objective for us. We may be done through partners, but a big objective for us. Our aquatic invasive species program, which has now pretty much become a national model, has up until now focused a lot of our attention on prevention, also on load reduction. We now, in both states, have sustainable funding for doing that, and we're moving to the other two aspects of our program, which is control. So we've already got aquatic invasive species in the lake, helping control it, and rapidly respond if we have a problem. This is a before-and-after example of a control project in Animal Bay, where we're able to reduce vegetation. So they are very effective, so we're working on funding for that. And stormwater operation and maintenance, and you all probably know, every one of the local governments around the lake is now charged through the states with total maximum burden load and load reduction plans and credit program and all of that. We have a side-by-side program that's at the parcel level. We see over time when we bring those together, and maybe there's some redundancy that needs to be removed, but create a long-term staple funding source so that all of that can be maintained and operated, and it's not just a one-shot deal, which you do in some of these facilities and programs. So that's our third environmental improvement initiative. Our seventh area, seventh initiative, after the three that I just went through, is what we're calling shoreline adaptation. We have been working on what we call shore zone. We like to make words, shore zone is not, it's spelled better, but it is something we use, and there are regulations about piers and regulations about weeds and those sort of things. And now, and those were challenged in court, and we had to revise them, but now with the lake levels proceeding, there's sort of a different environment that we need to look at. What, does it make any difference if you've got some of these piers that's still dry? Are there other alternatives? So that's a high priority for us to, immediate safety needs, we've met with the public safety providers, they need to be able to get out of the lake right away. We need to do some immediate things and update our regulations. We also want to look a little bit longer term at adaptation strategy and some scenarios there. If that requires us to go back to the shore zone work, we will, and that, we're waiting to see. We're also looking forward to receiving the baseline information from the Bureau of Public Reclamation, they studied the whole lake, from Lake Tahoe, the treacherous system all the way down the trip. Like in Nevada, I know your water agency was a partner in that, as we were, well, some of our own water and flood agencies. So we're looking forward to incorporating that information. And then over the longer term, we think there needs to be, and we've heard this through other groups, some more research and science into your shore water quality issues. And the Long Regional Water Quality Board is actually leading that, with the Deer Shore Working Group that we're helping, we're participating. So that's, those are all wrapped together as our shoreline initiative. Number eight, transportation, as you probably know, we are the designated metropolitan planning organization for the Lake Tahoe Basin. We, by federal regulation, have to update our regional transportation plan every four years anyway, but what we're trying to do is figure out how to connect the pieces, the bike routes, update the transit system so it works more seamlessly, and the other goal is to provide mobility to the community while reducing carbon emissions between the two. We'll be doing that, that plan will be done in 2016. It's done every four years. We are working through the project development teams with your staff, great working relationship there, project development teams on each quarter, and we'll have public workshops and such, so that's a process that we're involved in. The third priority area, third of the five, is using best data and science, as I mentioned, and to do science council. Some of our thresholds that record everything, you are 30 or more years old, there is some newer science, we've begun the process of having peer reviews by some of the best minds in the business, looking at our threshold report we do every four years, and they've suggested that we need to look at updating some of our standards and some of the monitor. So those are the next two initiatives. First is get our next four-year report out in 2016, again, to be peer-reviewed as the 2012 one was, and then monitoring and updating the thresholds as our last initiative. So that's what we're up to for the next five years, just a little bit of a key question. And we'd like to answer any questions, and we appreciate you inviting us there.
Any questions or comments from board members? I don't see any, so thank you very much for the information that you're coming in with, coming in briefness on this.
Thank you.
Okay. Our 10:30 timed item is to discuss a lease and operating agreement with the town of Truckee to provide the provision of animal shelter services for Eastern Placer County. And at some point during this discussion, which has been a while, I'm going to need to get up in the water office and Supervisor Wigan, my vice chair, is not here to whom I normally turn things over. When I walk out, I'm going to ask if our meeting past chairman Supervisor Duran would be willing to serve as chairman when I do head out. Thank you.
Thank you.
So at some point, we see we pass the gavel to Supervisor Duran, this is going on there, and he will conduct the meeting in my absence, but please go ahead and proceed.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, and Laura Westen, Director of Animal Services. The action staff is requesting that we today is to approve a 30-year lease operating agreement with the town of Truckee to provide animal shelter services for the Eastern Placer County regional area. This agreement would be for the period starting September 1st of this year through September 1st of 2044. Essentially, the same request presented in a staff report six months ago at a regular board meeting at Grand La Baca. At that time, members of the community that formed the group called the Friends of the Tahoe Vista Shelter requested a six-month delay in making a decision on that requested action, so they would have an opportunity to make a counterproposal to retain a shelter facility in the Tahoe Vista area. With many hours of volunteer work they have invested, they have completed a counterproposal that has been provided as an attachment in your packets for your consideration, and they have representatives here today that will present their proposal at the conclusion of this staff report. So at this time, I'd like to show a short video as part of my report, so you can see some of the differences between the two facilities and to present some of the ideology in partnering with our neighboring jurisdiction.
Shelter was built in 1972, kind of back when, you know, the way of thinking was dog pound versus the welfare of the animals, the comfortability of the animals. There's 12 kennels in the back of our facility, very narrow aisleways, so when you go in, the dogs are barking, they're hitting the cage, jumping up, trying to get your attention, becomes really loud on the inside. One of the downsides of this facility is we don't have somewhere for them to do a meet and greet, where they can be in a quiet room, free of distractions. There's plenty of distractions around this facility, so sometimes it's difficult for the adopter to get a real feel of how that animal is going to be with them.
The goal is all about the animals, so everything we can do to make sure they're healthy, they're vaccinated, that they have good homes, is the objective of, that we'd like to reach. We need to upgrade the facility, it doesn't meet modern humane society standards. Our adoption rates are four to six months for dogs typically, can be up to a year for cats. We have an opportunity to collaborate with another jurisdiction, municipality, the town of Truckee, who, only 13 miles away, built a modern state-of-the-art facility. Their adoption rates are 17 days, which is much more in the goal. People can come in and redeem an animal from the shelter. But if they have trouble traveling there, we have instituted a free-ride home program, so to speak, where if somebody's all the way over in Tahoma, they don't have a vehicle, they might have to wait a day, but we'll work it into our route and try to bring their animal back to them. The town of Truckee has a facility that can certainly handle all of the animals of Eastern Placer County for the next 30 years. A significant amount, about $100,000 a year operational cost savings if we do move in with the town of Truckee.
The shelter's been open for just under two years. Sometimes in some of the older shelters, it's depressing, and people don't want to be there, but people love it here. You come in, and the first thing that you see as you walk in the door, you can see the cats through the window, playing, watching TV. So we do about 500 adoptions a year. Right now, we are in one of the community rooms for the cats, and so cats that are social and get along with other cats can be in this room, and we have all different perches for them, different feeding stations. All of the cats have double-compartment housing, or else they can be in these communal rooms out and about. Inherently, animal shelters are a stressful place for animals who have to come through, and so the design of this building was all about creating spaces for the animals to live that would reduce their stress and maybe mimic being in a home, in a room. The dog rooms are called real-life rooms, and they're supposed to mimic being in a room in a home versus being in a kennel. The rooms are set up with air exchange so that each room has its own individual air exchange, not allowing disease to transfer from room to room. They're soundproof. Visually, there's barriers so that the dogs aren't stimulated by each other, by people passing down the hallways, and that reduces their stress. The room is very clean and inviting, not only for the animal, but for adopters to go in and visit with the dogs as well. Each of the dog rooms has an indoor-outdoor component to it. The inside area, they have a bed, and they're water and toys and bedding, and then they have a little doggy door that allows them access to an outside little pen where they have their own private area to use, so they can be inside and outside. And with the weather here, we do have heaters that are located above the outside portion of their runs, so when it's cool out, then we keep them warm outside. So the outdoor area is used, we rotate the dogs outside, this gives them some outside time in a larger space. We actually have pools that we put out in the summer so they can cool off in there. We can do surgeries here in-house and have a veterinarian that's working with us. We do spays and neuters every Tuesday. What I love most about this shelter is the ability to improve the lives of the animals who pass through our doors. It can be very rewarding, knowing that when they come here, we will give them the best possible care, and we will hopefully reunite them with their owner or find them the best possible new home.
So clearly, from the video, the objective is to improve shelter services in Eastern Placer County, and the proposed solution meets all of our objectives to reach those goals and has a significant cost savings along with it as well. We began the process by assessing our current shelter facility operating in Tahoe Vista. As was mentioned in the video, the current facility opened in 1972, and it's approaching its maximum designed operational lifespan. It's a simple cinder block construction, about 500 square feet interior space, and we handle about nine animals per year there at a cost of about $340 per animal. Has maximum capacity of 12 dogs and 10 cats, and we do experience some overcrowding during some of the summer months. As you can see in the video, there were some operational challenges with the current shelter that we would like to approve. The lack of dog rooms, allowing the animals to have outside access, used up a lot of staff time, as the animals must be handled each time they take them outside. The play area is not covered, making it difficult to use in the winter without shoveling snow, and there is no shade during the summer months without having to deploy some tarps on the fence line, which you probably saw during your tour yesterday. The small lobby makes it difficult to have more than a couple visitors at a time, and it can be challenging to keep the shelter open during normal business hours all the time when the officers are out in the field. Limited storage area translates into using one space we do have for multiple uses that were not really designed for that, not ideal for that purpose. Laundry room, for example, doubles as an isolation or quarantine or vaccination room at times, and that's one of the reasons why, overall, it just doesn't meet modern standards. These deficiencies translate into adoption rates that are just way too long, with an average of four months for dogs, and that's up to six months and eight months to sometimes even a year for cats. This is one of the main reasons, one of the areas we'd really like to improve on, that would directly benefit the health and wellbeing of the animals that we're in charge to care for. So the solutions that we considered, first solution was to upgrade the facility to meet modern standards. This is not the recommended action to the board, as the cinder block construction's not really conducive to additions. To open up walls and add other rooms and hallways, we've advised would weaken the main structure, and the roof line is not really easily expandable. The second option considered was to replace the existing facility with a new building at the existing location. This is also not a recommended option, and as a much larger facility would be needed to meet our goals and standards, and the lot size and the restrictions on the size of the coverage areas. Estimated cost of $2.7 million is seen excessive considering the modern state-of-the-art facility is so close by, is more than adequate to provide a higher level of service and saving significant amounts of money is already in operation. So the third option is new, and was not presented to you at the previous board meeting, which is to consider the counterproposal from the Friends of the Tahoe Vista Shelter to build a new facility at the current location using alternative funding. And although there are many good ideas, this proposal, the staff is not recommending it either, as there are many uncertainties with this plan. Putting a property tax levy that would need to be approved by developers, using fundraising as a solution, as a continuous revenue source to sustain operations, and the proposal calls for an advisory board to oversee the collaboration with an unknown structure with county management, and the plan also does not realize the annual cost savings that the recommended solution does realize. So the fourth and final recommended is the recommended option to enter to the contractual agreement of the town of Truckee to operate as a regional shelter. There are 10,000 square foot state-of-the-art facility, opened in 2013 with enough capacity to shelter the animals for the town of Truckee and for all of Eastern Placer County for the next 30 years at once. The improved level of shelter and care for the animals is clear, with adoption rates of only 17 days for dogs and 22 days for cats, meeting our target and goals to find permanent living homes for our animals, as well as our main objectives. This benefit would be immediate upon moving operations to that facility. Town Truckee Shelter is only 13 miles away, as I mentioned, from our current facility and Tahoe Vista. It's conveniently located on Stevens Lane and Alhile 8. Town Truckee Shelter is actually closer to the communities of Immigrant Cat, King Vale, Soho Springs, Norton, Martis, North Star, Serene Lakes, Alka Meadows, and the Olympic Valley. This agreement will improve services to Eastern Placer County by sharing resources with the town of Truckee as a partnership. Animal control officers will provide the same service covering the same Eastern Placer County areas as they operate it now. Free-ride home program, as I mentioned, for microchipped and licensed Placer County animals found by an officer or turned in at Truckee Shelter for those having difficult traveling to the town of Truckee Shelter. Placer County uses the same software system as Town Truckee's for seamless collaboration and data management. There'll be a kiosk or a computer provided for licensing at the County Shelter, and officers will soon have the ability in the field to issue licenses right on the spot using the same software. So the fiscal considerations, Placer County will realize savings by entering into this agreement as the $250 per animal fee is less than our $340 per animal cost currently. And there are also reduced operating costs as building maintenance will no longer be an expenditure, as well as basic veterinary kennel attendant services that are included in the base $250 per animal fee. The reduced expenditures add up to $100,000 per year savings, with totals of about $2.5 million in reduced expenditures over the life of the 30-year agreement. Removing the need to build a new facility also saves approximately $5.7 million. So the upfront cost of Placer County of $750,000 as a one-time capital contribution is paid back within the first eight years of the agreement. So just a quick summary of the benefits. Placer County by sharing with its neighboring agency, benefit by providing access to a modern facility for all of our residents for the next 30-plus years. Dramatically improves animal adoption rates, provides access to a community room and much larger public areas for increased outreach opportunities. Saves tens of millions of dollars while providing services to both our citizens and their animals. Therefore, this is the option recommended by staff to approve an 2-3-year lease operating agreement with the town of Truckee and include a one-time capital contribution payment of $750,000. So if you have questions, I'd be at this point, I'd like to invite our partners up from the Friends of Tahoe Vista Shelter to present their counterproposal, or if you have questions.
Any questions by board members? Supervisor Duran, your lights on.
Oh, no, that's.
Okay. Supervisor Montgomery, you have a question?
I, I did have one question for you, Wes. In terms of the funding, I think you said it was 10,000 square feet and $6 million for the Truckee Shelter?
I believe that's what was said yesterday.
Okay, and.
Dan Olson's here to comment specifically on the cost of the town of Truckee Shelter.
Who were the partners in that? That was the town of Truckee and the Humane Society?
Correct, they were the key partners, they sort of split, if that's correct.
So Nevada County wasn't involved in that at all?
No, Nevada County was, had no, nothing to do with building the shelter.
Thank you, and sorry, just animals in Nevada County, if they're picked up in Nevada County outside the town of Truckee, they go to Nevada City, is that correct?
That's correct, I believe Sammy's friends operates a shelter in, in Nevada City, Grass Valley area.
Thank you.
All right. I'm sorry, if we could have the representatives from the town of Truckee who are going to address the board, if you can come up at this time, if you had, did you have any prepared comments?
No.
No, you're just here to answer questions?
Answer questions.
Okay, all right, great. And the question Supervisor Montgomery asked about the, the size and cost, that, that was, okay. All right, thank you very much. All right, I know that we have a, the folks who are interested in us maintaining the location at Tahoe Vista have their proposal and have requested some time to present that, so at this time, we'll go ahead and ask who is designated by the group to speak on behalf of the group, okay? If you'll come on over here. Now, did you have a PowerPoint that we had queued up as well? And do we have an approximate time for how long you think it'll take for your presentation?
15 minutes.
Okay.
All right, my name is Linda Slack Cruz. I am a Tahoe Vista resident, and I'm the spokesperson for the Friends of the Tahoe Vista Animal Shelter. Today, first of all, I want to thank the board for giving us the additional six months to come up with our all, our own alternative proposal. In reviewing our current facility and its operations, we found that not only, we not only needed to bring the facility itself up to current sheltering standards, but we needed to also address it operations. Building a new facility was not going to make a difference if services weren't addressed. Our services have been lacking at best with staffing at the top of the list. Inadequate staffing leads to failure. It's a disservice to the employees, a disservice to the animals, and a disservice to the communities. So to move forward, we needed to create something better than we had today, something more than a shelter, and to properly staff it. This is, this would include a supervisor that truly is onsite three days a week in Tahoe, as promised, as well as a kennel attendant that has been misplaced since April when she resigned. So in order for us to actually make this work, we actually have a full, we need a fully functioning staff. It is with this premise in mind, the proposal was created, and we want to thank Michelle Okushima and Darren McDonald, who put their time and energy into what, what is going to be before you. Make sure I do this right. I'm sure if I'm doing this right. Oh, okay. Tahoe Vista Animal Shelter proposal, I'm gonna run through these very quickly. Our objective today is to show you the goals and advantages of the proposal, talk about the building requirements, phases and needs assessment, organization, staffing and management, services offered and enhancements, our marketing plan and fundraising plan, financial history and analysis, and then to wrap it up. So the goals of the proposal, we'd like to provide higher standards in sheltering care. We want to prevent any animal neglect, cruelty, and irresponsibility through public outreach and education. We want to use better adoptive programs. We want to remain a no-kill. We want to create a resource for the community and charitable, charitable nonprofit organizations, and we want to maintain existing public involvement and volunteer opportunities, as well as create new opportunities. Also, we wanted to create a model for small community shelters like ours, and then keep it financially sustainable. The advantages to our proposal, it keeps the services local where it's needed the most. It doesn't make business sense to move outside of the basin to help 6% of the animals that were served in a five-year period, or it doesn't make sense to move outside of the basin for 3% of the animal control calls that also took place in, in our last year. It makes better sense to stay inside the basin and, and support the 94% of the animals served or the 97% of the animal control calls. Our proposal will give us increased community involvement, greater opportunity for volunteerism, and increased partnerships and collaborations. At this time, I'd like to bring up Darren and Michelle. Michelle Okushima has more than five years of clinical experience as a veterinary assistant, assisting in the care of small animals, large animals, and exotics. She has a degree in biology with emphasis in behavioral science, was published twice as an undergrad, and has worked with UC Berkeley's Hyena Project, as well as a biologist to the queen of Zimbabwe in, in care, collection, and release of indigenous venomous snakes and crocodiles. She currently owns a local pet store, Hot Diggity Dog and Cat, and is an officer with the North Tahoe Lake, North Lake Tahoe Business Association. Darren McDonald is a certified public accountant, who grew up in the North Lake Tahoe area, where he has been in public practice for 15 years. With that, Michelle.
Our targets here for trying to decide what our needs assessment, what we were trying to reach, came largely first from the county. As Wes had described, there is a need for a new shelter, and we don't just, we don't debate that. The current one should perhaps be reduced to rubble. The, what we are ultimately trying to see is what is the real replacement? What is the shelter of the future going to be? So starting with those basic needs, we begin by looking at what is our turnover rate for animals to determine size of shelter? The length of stay is always the largest factor. That tells you how many cages you need, how many times you're going to turn your cages, so to speak, much like a restaurant turning tables. With the average stay of four to six months, in our proposal, what we have done is we have cut that in half and then put in measures to achieve that. Now, why half? When you consider that a model is more of three weeks for a dog and about four to five weeks for a cat, and that would be what the Humane Society would recommend, but instead, we're proposing something that's only half. Part of the reason is because of the breeds of dogs we service. You may have noticed in your tour yesterday that the majority of the dogs that were there are hard-to-place breeds, pit bulls, rottweilers. There were, of course, chihuahuas there too, which move a little faster, but. Whereas when you perhaps visited and you saw on the videos, well, the Truckee Shelter has a larger, more even mix of a variety of breeds. You have golden retrievers, you have the labradoodles, you have those dogs that move quickly. So our dogs tend to stay, in fact, I believe there's about 10 pit bulls out of the 12 cages in the, in the shelter today. So we didn't want to create too aggressive a turn rate. Plus Tahoe is much more seasonal in terms of economies than Truckee is. The weather patterns and of course the summer movement is really what sort of draws that down into our shoulder seasons. So, moving from that perspective, we can remain at 12 kennels, we've added three cat rooms. That'll turn us eight weeks for dogs, 20 weeks for cats, which is still not an acceptable level, but it's a start level. And that'll service 94 dogs, or 104 dogs and 78 cats annually, which is in excess of the 90 dogs and 37 cats that you get on average over the last five years.
Thank you. Okay, so it's true, in 1972, when our shelter was built, it was more of a concept of pound. It was created with concrete and cages, and that's what we currently have today. What I'd like to see happen, and what I'd like to see happen in my community, is to create a shelter that the community can use as a resource. We do have a tremendous opportunity to create a model shelter in a small community in a partnership with Placer County that other communities will eventually be able to look at and use as a model and an example of how to keep a shelter alive in a small community. The floor plan that I've created, I've, I have added a community room or a meeting and education room. And when I did this, I reached out to other nonprofits in the area to ascertain whether or not the facility would be used and how it would be utilized. And I'm actually really proud to say that there was a surprising amount of interest in a community room and a community effort to keep a shelter going. So the things that I was most impressed by, and there are a few, you can see up here who we reached out to, and these are just a few of them. The Wildlife Center, Connie at the Wildlife Center was extremely enthusiastic about being able to use that platform to reach a greater audience about wildlife in the Tahoe Basin. The Boys and Girls Club really liked the idea of coming in and teaching their children how to greet a new dog or greet a dog safely. Tahoe Safe Alliance will increase community awareness about the correlation of animal abuse to domestic violence. And the one I was really most excited about was the Washoe County Indian Tribe wanting to participate and bring in examples of how animals of the Tahoe Basin relate to the creation myths, excuse me, creation stories, and also how animals relate to their spirituality. Thank you. Okay. What I'm going to present, the floor plan that I'm going to present, meets all the Humane Society current standards for animal care and sheltering. Our proposed shelter is a scaled-down version of the, the list that was given to us by Placer County of, for animal services, sorry. So in, in this, it was required that an HVAC system be included, and there is one that has been planned. It's actually a split system that actually not only meets, but exceeds ventilation guidelines given to me by the Small Animal Design people in Denver. Okay, so what are the differences? In our plan, we've reduced it, the footprint to 3,500 square feet. The original Placer County proposal was 6,738 square feet. The exterior square footage is 7,000 square feet, where Placer County's was 10,070. Kennels, we retained 12 runs, two of which can be converted into a large run, because we do have very large breeds in the Tahoe Basin, and they require more space. I did drop down the number of bathrooms from three to one. This is of course negotiable, and I can add a separate public bathroom if that is necessary. Okay, this is what we lovingly refer to as the vision test, because you can't see anything on it. Okay, so I'm told I have a laser pointer. Oh, I do, okay. So in Wes's video, there were a few things that I wanted to address. First off, the spacious lobby. So here you have the parking lot, which does have a handicap space available. You come in straight through the lobby here, which has plenty of space, and you're greeted by a room with windows that houses puppies and kittens. And then the other thing was a dog meeting room, which we do have, I have supplied here, which also has a separate meeting area outside, so it's neutral ground for old family, or family pets and potential new family pets to greet each other in a neutral environment. The cat colony, which is here, is also provided. There was some concern about cats with double compartments. If you go here into the socialized cat room, we can, we can provide that. The Mason Company has fabulous resources for that, and we can implement those once you agree to a partnership with us. One of the things that Wes was concerned about was lighting. I have placed this building in southern exposure, and all of the rooms have windows. It was also mentioned that in, in Truckee, the dogs have their own outdoor spaces. So this is set up very similarly to the town of Truckee, where they both have indoor and outdoor access at all times. And going back to the HVAC system, as far as ventilation for each room, I have created space for the AC units, and also each room, as well as the front office area, will have their own ventilation system with proper air exchange. The things that are unique to this particular plan, because this is an animal control and care facility, I do have separate areas for drop-off of dogs and cats, so that they are not mixing in with people who want to come in and adopt a pet. Here, we have the Sally Port where officers can directly come into a treatment room should you have a hit by a car or some serious issue. They can also come through this area should the treatment room be taken. I did supply two night drop boxes, because at present, we are having issues with people tying animals to posts in the front of the animal care facility, where they can die of exposure and predation, get eaten by coyotes. I added a cat meeting room here, in between the kitten window and the cat colony, so that people can come in and meet their cat and spend some time with them. And I think those are the, the major differences in the design of the town of Truckee's as to our proposal. I did set it up, because I have worked in veterinary clinics, and I have worked in facilities that require efficiency and workflow, and I do believe that satisfies that requirement. So I, I think we do have a very viable option here, but I know that you're concerned about the financial portion of it. So Darren's gonna come up and talk to you about how we. So, Darren's going to come up and talk to you about how we can achieve this together financially.
What we foresee is constructing the facility over the course of three phases. The first phase, where we establish an advisory board, which we'll talk about shortly, begin to continue our capital campaign. We've already raised about $100,000 to help fund the designing and engineering that would have, of course, accompany this. We'd also begin the process of attempting to start the parcel tax levy. That's all Phase One. Moving into Phase Two, where we would actually demolish the existing structure, construct the new one, it would be the first year of the levy. And then ultimately, opening in Phase Three, when we have the nonprofits beginning to join us as partners, and we have the opening of the new shelter. Our concept is that the shelter would continue to be funded and managed through the county at the same levels, but it has been proposed by numerous other shelters where a nonprofit, in fact, is managing that shelter, and the county is only providing the law enforcement support. So, that is still an option in either approach. We have proposed funding for the shelter of $50,000 annually to help offset the cost of the shelter. In the course of the four months from the time we started fundraising to now raising $100,000, we received from over 1,000 people. We believe that it's a reasonable target to hit $50,000 on an annual basis. And as I have great deal of nonprofit experience, that's how many of the organizations today continue to run. The concept of the advisory board is a coalition between veterinarians, stakeholders, nonprofits that have animal services as part of their mission, and county staff, in an effort to help design the best shelter, and to design services and to design fundraising opportunities as well as to help commit to the public outreach. The goal here is that, again, it is more than a shelter. It is a community center of animal health. That's the opportunity that we seek. The old ideas of a shelter being concrete and cages is not what we're looking for anymore. A modern shelter today is going to have the components of a hotel, it's going to have the components of a pet store, it's going to have the components of a community room. Services, of course, are a big part of what draws people in. This is sort of what we have put together as an initial set of services. Obviously, pre-adoption, spain neuters, and preventative healthcare are big parts of that. And in our proposal, we have managed to save money by not including veterinary staff but rather partnering with nonprofits that are in the area that already provide veterinary services to the public. Lost and found can be improved through the use of volunteers. By adding additional services, we have volunteer opportunities. Currently, we have more volunteers than we actually have perhaps dogs to walk. So, we have the opportunity, then, to capitalize on the volunteer base that wants to help on the shelter, improve education in the schools. Plan ultimately requires that we reduce the turnover in the cages. That means that we have to increase the number of adoptions. These are also volunteer opportunities, concepts, programs like Pet of the Week, and by using social media, having its own Facebook page, having its own website, manning those with volunteers. And in our proposal, the kennel attendant begins to shift more of their role to volunteer coordination because the roles are actually being taken over by volunteers. And this is not an unusual, I'm on the board of Tahoe Safe Alliance, we're a domestic violence shelter. We have about 100 volunteers and about 20 paid staff, and that's required to maintain our mission. And we maintain crisis lines 24 hours a day, and we're able to accomplish that. So, it is a clearly accomplishable goal in this area and in this community.
Actually, how many more slides do we have?
Two.
Okay.
We have proposed the idea of a parcel tax, a limited parcel tax to the served areas of Parcel County only. Now, parcel tax is a non-advalorem fee-based tax that's applied to all the parcels. And in the state of California, this is approved through Proposition 13, it's a special tax. There's about 1,000 of them in the state, there's quite a few, and in Placer County, there's one, Measure A, which is a seven-year parcel tax that, I believe, sunset's in 2017. Other California local governments have done this for shelter services specifically. The City of California, Oakdale, Live Oak, and Paradise, all have performed this sort of tax specifically for shelter services, but they're often used as a tool of local governance. We have proposed a two-year methodology to see if it was sustainable. Last week, we started a four-day survey to see what kind of public support we would have around $100 as a parcel fee for two years on the idea of 15,000 parcels. And we received about an 88% approval rate on that. Now, that was floating an idea. Obviously, because it is a long-life shelter, if the board sought fit to do it over a 20-year period of time, that would be a $10 parcel fee. My final two slides are going to be on how we pay for it. Average cost, $385,000 is what actual cost has been over the last three years, and county subsidy of that is about $377,000 because you get offset with some license fees that are fairly minimal. The big parts to notice, about 88% of those costs do not go away with the move to Truckee. The only part of that goes away is the loss of the job, and that's the job of the kennel attendant, which is about an $86,000 a year saving. The rest of those costs are the ones that are actually saved. Using the $100,000 number, reducing it by the rent that's actually going to be paid, the cost of the animals, and the amortization of the $750,000 fee over 25 years, you do see a savings. We agree. That savings is close to $50,000. We can raise $50,000 as a difference. We can keep those services here in the basin. We can provide greater outreach to the community, and we can do it, and it's about a push, and I will agree with you. It's about even. The savings is what we raise. But we can raise that on a regular basis, and this community wants this shelter here. There is a transition cost, of course. A new agreement would have to be raised with the town of Truckee, assuming that we would achieve the same deal or approximately the same dollar component of that. The cost savings of doing that would be, again, if funds raised.
This is the last slide. So, in doing a wrap-up, in closing, we have met what you had requested of us. We have put a plan in place. We have presented a viable alternative which meets the needs of today and provides a shelter of the future, a shelter that enhances community collaborations and opportunities with existing nonprofits, engages community members, and sets all of us up to succeed. We have identified a funding mechanism to build a new facility affecting those who benefit, and we have proven our plan is sustainable. In touring the two facilities yesterday, we were unable to share our vision of the new facility or answer questions that may have helped you, the board, understand that vision. I thank all of the community members who attended our facility tour and apologize to you for not realizing ahead of time we would not be able to ask or answer questions. In touring the town of Truckee's facility, you saw an incredible collaboration, one that took years and countless hours to create, but it didn't start out that way. Truckee started with an inadequate facility, even using a porta potty. Much like Placer County's aging facilities that 40 or 50 years ago were considered pounds and the standard for that time, the town of Truckee found themselves in a situation where they needed to build a new facility that met today's sheltering standards. They had a vision. Yesterday, you saw a fully-staffed, state-of-the-art facility and community center. You saw collaboration between the local government, a nonprofit, and community. You saw a win-win for all involved. The video Placer County released last week says it all, and we couldn't agree more. We need to replace the current facility, and we need to put the time and the energy that the town of Truckee did into our vision here in Placer County where services are needed the most. We respectfully ask that you accept our proposal as it is what the communities of Eastern Placer County want. Over the last six months, 4,000 residents have participated in our efforts, 1,000 have donated, and 100 businesses support it. Please listen to our voices and grant us the opportunity to work with you in an effort to create something more than a shelter. Last, I want to thank the committees, the volunteers, and the communities for the support over the last six months. Thank you, and we'll take your questions now.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to limit the total time on this item. We don't have time for sustained applause for 30 seconds at a time after each speaker. Let's just get to the item, okay? I want to know if questions of my board, or if any of my board members have questions of the presenter on the proposal that we just saw, Supervisor Montgomery.
Yeah. Hi, Linda, thank you. I had a couple of questions on some items that you guys brought up. In terms of the phasing, what is your vision for time that that would take, particularly demolition and construction of a new shelter?
Actually, would you bring up that slide that has your three different phases? That would be very helpful, I think.
Jennifer, I'm going to defer the questions to the two that worked on this proposal.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm aggressive.
I'm sorry?
I'm aggressive.
You're aggressive, okay.
I'd like to see it done in two years. That's kind of hard to pull off.
Which part in two years?
I would like to see the whole process done in two years. Phase One, in an ideal situation, would be completed by March. We would actually use the winter period to actually have all the engineering and designing done. I would actually have the demolish of the shelter start in the spring of next year and the initial groundwork done in the fall of that year, and then have the shelter actually finished and opened in 2017.
Okay. So, in terms of Phase One, and as it relates to your timing, you're talking about levying a parcel tax.
We wanted to propose that to the public as part of the general election, although a special election would also be allowed.
So, June of 2016?
We were, yes. Well, actually, we were hoping for November.
So, I believe you're too late to get anything on the November ballot?
We feared that would be the case.
Okay.
No, of 2016.
Of 2016.
Of 16, right.
You were looking for November of this year?
I was hoping for November.
Yeah.
We don't have a ballot in November of this year. Our first ballot would be June of next year.
And we could do that in June.
Okay.
Short of a special election.
Okay. And this is part of the clarity that I'm trying to get in terms of timing because I had heard expectations that you were shooting for this November, and I just sort of went, eh, that's just not going to happen. And when you did the survey and you got this 88% positive feedback, where and how was that survey posted and hosted?
So, it was advanced through a Facebook page that we, of course, had set up, and then it was also fed out to members of the North Lake Tahoe Business Association.
And what was the Facebook page that was hosted on?
That was our own Facebook page.
So, that Friends of the Tahoe Vista Animal Shelter?
Yes.
Okay. So, I would just say I...
It's a skewed result.
Yeah, Linda and I have talked about this, and I've been talking to folks out in the public about the general sentiment for a $100 a year tax.
And again, that was...
If you wouldn't mind, let me finish, please. Thank you. I would be surprised if you would get 88%. In fact, I would be very surprised, just based on the feedback I've got from people, if you would meet the minimum requirement to actually pass a measure like that. So, my suggestion, and I've made this to Linda, is don't think about the tax. That's probably a non-starter, Placer County being as conservative as it is about taxes, and maybe come up with an alternative vision than the tax because I think that would be a really hard row to hoe, honestly.
Do you find the same in your conversations? Have you found similar resistance, or would you expect a similar resistance with a 10-year, 20-year tax?
I only discussed what Linda and I had discussed, which was the $100 per year for two years. But just, you know, I'm trying to get some clarity in my own mind about what this process would look like and how much time it would take. So, based on Phase One, at the earliest at June of next year, 2016, unless you put on a special election, you're thinking demolition, relocation, and construction would all be able to occur in one building season or two?
Two building seasons from demolition to reopening, yes.
Okay. So, again, that would be depending on the weather and what TRPA allows, that would be summer essentially of next year that you could start demolition because you can't do ground disturbance.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. I think that helps me understand the timeframe. Thank you.
Any other board members have any questions on this particular slide or this proposal? Supervisor Graham?
Yes, I do. What is your profession, sir?
I'm a certified public accountant.
Okay. So, you're CPA. Have you ever built a shelter before?
No, I've built a shelter of animals.
Have you ever built, you know, an animal facility?
No, never an animal.
Okay. Have you ever fundraised for an animal facility?
Not for an animal facility. Most of my work is always...
Okay. And what have you fundraised for?
We've fundraised for...
And how much is the most you've raised in that endeavor? And if anything proprietary, you don't need to disclose that, but...
We have three. Annually, we raise through that.
Okay. You know, the concern I have, and I'm going to be just completely honest with you, and most of my animals at my home are rescues, is that had I heard there was more money in the till, had I heard that there was, you know, a plan, you know, engineers, folks that were, you know, really, you know, chomping at the bit to get this done, that would be a little bit more impressive. I think you've done a great job, and I don't want to discount what you've put together very shortly, but I think, looking at this right here, that that's very, you're right, that's very aggressive. Having not been through the process, I mean, Jen and I have just spent the last three years going through a $24 million shelter, knowing all of the things that can go wrong with that. I thought the process was going to, you know, actually be a fairly short one, and it actually turned out to be considerably longer. And what I'm seeing here is that as things come up, as experiences brought onboard, that the process is not going to compact or contract, it's going to expand. And normally, you know, having a lot of building, construction experience, that is very aggressive, and I see this pushing out to, you know, five, seven. And before long, we're way past the point in time where we were cued that 750 that we're contemplating going into savings by going into this direction with Truckee. They've already built it, it's already staffed. So, as a policymaker, I have a dollar, and I have to kind of figure out what bucket I'm going to put my dollar in. And it has nothing to do with, because it's newer and nicer, it's better. This isn't 1972. The shelter that we're replacing up in Placer was built in the 1950s, so we've got 50 years of regulation and stuff between then and now. These are things that people are facing all over the place. And also, you know, we're getting into an era in government where we're not getting more money, we're getting less. We're getting less for law enforcement, we're getting less for services, we're getting less for this. So, we have to maximize the value of that dollar and get the most that we can out of it. And collaboration with, whether it's a wastewater treatment plant, whether it's a water facility, whether it's maintenance that we have on our facilities here, they're now being taken care of by CR College through contract, those are the things, how we maximize our dollar. And for me, you know, it sounds great, you know, God bless you for doing the work that you've done, but, you know, that's kind of my perspective, and I don't want to shoot anything down that you do because I think that you've done an excellent job so far in putting this together, but I just kind of wanted to give you some insight in what I'm thinking, all right? So, just to put it all on the table, so, all right.
Thank you, Supervisor Graham.
Thank you.
Question in regard to Phase One and timing of all this. So, obviously, the key step here, your entire proposal hinges on the parcel tax at this point, in the passing of the parcel tax. Absolutely, you don't have the funding.
We felt that it made sense from the standpoint of attempting to raise funds for this local area, that the funds should come from the local area.
But again, this proposal lizards based on the passing of that parcel tax?
Yes.
Okay. So, you've already learned that next June is the earliest regularly scheduled election. If you do a special election, you have to pay for it. You would have to pay for the component of adding the ballot question onto the ballot in a regularly scheduled election. So, hopefully, you figured that into your fundraising. Passing a parcel tax is a quarter-million-dollar campaign. Hopefully, you figured out how you're going to raise a quarter-million dollars just to pass the parcel tax. But it doesn't even appear on the ballot unless this board places it on the ballot. And so, what you're going to be doing is asking this Board of Supervisors in an election year where three of us are up for reelection, including the supervisor that represents this area, asking her to vote to place a tax on the ballot. So, just some political realities that you need to take into consideration. Then, let's say you're successful in raising... Then, let's say you're successful in raising the $150,000 to $250,000 it's going to take, I think, to run a successful political campaign to get the parcel tax. When does that money start coming in? When do you actually receive those dollars from that parcel tax? It's not until the following fiscal year. So now we're out in '17 before you start getting that money. So when you're looking at phase one, and you're talking about new structure design, permitting, and selection of contractors, how much money are you willing to spend? How much are you going to be able to raise and spend in structure design and permitting?
We anticipated $100,000.
Okay, but is that going to be only after a parcel tax passes?
No, we have that in hand.
Okay, and you're willing to spend that kind of money on that while you're then out raising the additional money that you would need for a political campaign? Now, we haven't even gotten to the issue of the new facility, the additional coverage requirements associated with the new facility, the time for processing those additional coverage requirements through TRPA, through the county, and all the rest. And we're still in phase one. We haven't even gotten to phase two for the demolition and beginning construction. You're already at 2018 at the earliest by the time you get through all of these previous steps and start to receive some money that allow you to get into phase two. You've got to have that money in the bank before you get to phase two. So we're already three years out before you've even started phase two on this timeline here. You've laid out the steps properly, but you haven't put them in the context of the passage of time. Meanwhile, you're asking this board to subject the animals to the current conditions that are in that shelter today. And quite frankly, if that tour yesterday did anything for me, it made me realize that I think this board made an even bigger mistake than I thought we did six months ago by keeping those animals in that shelter for another six months and not introducing them to a better environment that's already existing, already on the ground, and those animals could have been in during that time period. This is not a solution that has the best interest of the animals in mind. So there's no way I can support this kind of a timeline, this kind of an ask of this board in terms of what you're requesting regarding placing a parcel tax on the ballot and all those other things, because the best interest of those animals, ultimately, you're putting off to a date uncertain. That's not what we're here for. So that's my thoughts on this particular proposal.
If I may?
Yes.
Only to expand on it. I don't disagree with anything you said. I believe that you're correct. But what we're concerned about is the continual erosion of services. If we modified our proposal and said, we'll work with the town of Truckee and engage in them, but your current agreement is going to prohibit the creation of a new rescue shelter, as it is written today. If that agreement was modified so that we could use their shelter for a time to then build our own shelter and to have our own services and to keep our services here, then that would be an acceptable proposal.
I understand that concern, thank you. Supervisor Holmes, do you have something?
I just have a comment on the parcel tax issue. If it did indeed go on the ballot and there was opposition, I can clearly see someone opposing it, asking the question of the voter, why would you want to pass a parcel tax when you have a facility within 13 miles that's not going to cost you anything other than the county putting forward the money that we already have to do that? And so I don't think a parcel tax has the ability to pass, quite honestly.
All right, I don't see any other questions for you from the board members based on this proposal. So at this time, if there are no other questions from board members or by board members of staff or the presenters, we'll go ahead and open up for public comment. We began this item now 40 minutes ago. We'll go another 30 minutes in public comment total. So you could do yourself a favor, or the favor of the neighbors, if you would try to keep your comments brief, and we'll get more people through. So at this time, anybody who wants to address the board under public comment, let's go ahead and step forward, please.
Good morning, I'm Mike Franklin. Live on the West Shore, close to the Homewood Ski Area. Couple of quick points I'd like to make is the purpose of the government in both the federal and state constitution is to establish and protect and maintain individual rights. I believe I have a right to have a shelter close to my home. In saying that the current facility is dilapidated, I don't argue. But I believe that it's the failure of the Placer County to not maintain that shelter to a condition where it is not dilapidated. I would also like to say this 30-year contract seems crazy, because it limits any future perspective of any sort of shelter within the Tahoe Basin. I agree with Ms. Montgomery that a parcel tax is pretty much ridiculous. But I will take $200 out of my pocket today and donate it to the Friends of the West Shore for their project to continue. I would also like to address the fact that in saying the current remodel or structure changes to the current pound, in making it weak in knocking down walls, it's not necessary to knock down walls. We can go right behind the current structure and add another structure. So I feel all the proposals are lacking in good judgment. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Folks who want to speak, if you go ahead and just start lining up in the center, and we'll get through you as quickly as possible.
Patricia Stanley, Truckee, California, Nevada County, 30 years in the area. Hi. I have some questions, and one of them is the 13 miles sounds like there's no geographic incident, like it's flat. Brockway Summit is one of the highest elevation gains and drops in the entire United States. Also at peak season with max capacity in all of the villages and residences of the Placer County and Nevada County area, I would like to know what the number of hours it could take one officer to provide a service of transport from Kings Beach or Tahoe Vista over to Truckee. Knowing that the gridlock there, all you're doing is putting my animal control officers in gridlock at high season. And I would like to state that currently, I believe the town of Truckee has a grossly inadequate service of animal control in effect at this time, and that is the only reason that their shelter is not at max capacity. There's one animal control officer who's able to go out in field at a time, one in the police officer dispatch. To prove the point, this morning, my dog was attacked while she was on leash at Regional Park by a Shih Tzu, and the woman had her kid on a swing. This has nothing to do with people at this point. I called Animal Control for them to go and speak with the woman, and then I went to Animal Control to see if I could possibly file an incident report. They told me that there was no record of my incident this morning at 9:31, hour before this meeting. My dog was attacked on her leash last week in Sierra Meadows. On Friday night, it took two days for an officer to respond. I cannot walk my dog on leash in Truckee anywhere without seeing dogs at large. It's ludicrous to say that because we have a bazillion-dollar shelter, that our animal services in Truckee are adequate. They are not, and I don't believe that the animal services in Placer County are also, as you said, they're cutting money here and there, blah, blah. Well, perhaps the money does need to be reappointed to service, and that Truckee shelter will be filled. Tahoe Donner alone, at one time, was the largest development in the entire state of California. Now, I know that it's not a full-time residence, but when it is at max capacity, how many animals are up there at large? That is only one of all of the so many people that come here. I don't think that this proposal makes sense sustainably in any way, and it certainly doesn't do anything for community activists or activity. I think the Truckee Shelter could model themselves on the Tahoe Vista work, and perhaps their shelter would be filled in no time at all. I really appreciate you listening to me today, and I guess my question is, how can the local residents have adequate animal services? I don't believe at this time that I do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Farida Gibson-Burt, Kings Beach resident and homeowner as well. And I adopted a dog and a cat from that shelter, and I raised my son going there to visit the animals. And I just want to speak for conditions, because I do agree, obviously, they can improve. However, incident of illnesses and fatalities and such, I believe are fairly low over there, because they really do care for the animals there. The health of those animals is great. I've only had one incident where there was, I think, ringworm in the cat's area. But other than that, those animals are very well taken care of. And I do know that there's a local vet that is very close by to that shelter. I really do hope that you will consider collaboration with us. We, in a short period of time, have displayed, just as you said, that we can, and I would love to see that happen. So thank you for listening to us today, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
My name is Deana Marshall. I'm with Friends of the North Tahoe Vista Animal Shelter. I wanted to say that I've worked with Darren McDonald in the past, and the reason this is so important to me is a so much bigger picture. It is about the animals, but it is also our first indicator of child abuse, sexual assault, and domestic violence. There is a 96% correlation between child abuse and animal abuse. If you look at any of the people that are the convicted murderers and felon, the Bundys, the Gacy's, they all started with abuse with animals. It's undeniable. So this is such a bigger picture than just closing a shelter. This is about our community and how we find these monsters. It's our first indicator. And one thing that wasn't brought up, I've worked for the last six months, every weekend, doing organic grassroots fundraisers. I took $97 from Troop 52 a couple of weeks ago. Last two weeks or three weeks ago, we had a blind deaf dog adopted at one of our fundraisers. That would have never happened at the shelter or on paper, never. So please understand that there are committed citizens that I have letters of intent for $25,000 and $50,000 to keep this thing going. I just received two checks in the hallway and two yesterday, when you were all there at the shelter. This has got legs, and it's a really organic grassroots, and this community cares. If we can't do this in Tahoe, where can we do it? We are a petri dish of well-minded citizens that care about our community. We care about living things, our air and our water. And if we let this shelter go, it will be the start of bad things to crumble. So please, listen up, I beg you, I implore you. I have builders, I have architects that have committed to me, they will work pro bono to keep this thing going. So please don't think that we just have $100,000 in cash, we have much more. I personally have written a letter of intent. Every one of us here is giving hours and money, hundreds of hours over the last six months. I read about it in the paper six months ago, and I've been working for Worf for eight years. How do you think I felt when I read about our shelter closing in the paper? Please consider keeping the shelter open, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Monica Evans, and I live on the West Shore. I just wanted to say that I've been a volunteer for a long time at both the Truckee Shelter and the Tahoe Vista Shelter. My concern is losing the 12 spots. I understand, I agree, that the shelter is, absolutely needs to be redone, that those conditions are not acceptable for the animals. But I would like you to consider the merge, like the gentleman was speaking about earlier, of while this gets put into place, partnering with Truckee and having it not be cut and dry 30 years we're done in the Tahoe Basin, but working together to figure out how we can come up with a feasible idea of maintaining. Because I think to have no-kill shelters is a really important thing, and even if it is just 100 dogs a year, that's a lot of lives to save. So, thank you for considering.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Christine Karnofsky. I'm a resident of Kings Beach. I have my own business, I'm a landscape designer. I'm also part of this group of wonderful people that have worked so diligently and hard to make this happen for us. And the issue that I just wanted to bring up that was brought up before is about the travel time, the 13 miles from the basin to Truckee, transporting our animals. I'm also on the Board of Directors for Pet Network Humane Society in Incline, and we have met with Linda and agreed to partner with our area and our community, because we have an in-house veterinarian. And for us to be able to bring our animals to Incline for vet services, emergency, is so much better than going over the mountain. And it's not just the vacation time, the high season, where the traffic is so, so dense and compacted, as you all know, and we have road services going on. But it's also the winters. How do we get over 267? How do we get over to Truckee in snowstorms and ice and all of that? So keeping this in the community and partnering with Pet Network is an alternative solution. And everyone that has spoke, has spoken so much from the heart. The community is so wanting to have our shelter available in the basin. It's so needed, and it's so much better for the local animals. So thank you for listening.
Anybody else? All right, again, if, folks, if you're interested in speaking, just go ahead and stand right there in the aisle way, it'll make it that much faster. Go ahead, sir.
Good morning, Pat Dillon, Tahoe Vista, for 30-something years. I want to thank the board for building the shelter in the late '60s and the early '70s. They obviously saw the need. The need has not diminished, the need has increased. We all know that many of the things that are put before this board center around bringing more people here, more events, more opportunities. And in many cases, we welcome that. The requisite cuts, though, in public services seem to be in contrast with that. And I would just encourage this board to look at the fact that indeed you did build a 20-something, $24 million shelter in Auburn, but now we're considering removing the one that was built on the east side. We, as a community, believe that we deserve that facility. It doesn't have to be the $24 million version, we don't actually need that, and we've proved that here. I think that what I get out of today is that a collaboration, a collaborative effort, can be made and will be successful at achieving something very similar to what Truckee has done that still meets your... done, that still meets your mandate to provide animal control services in this very area, and we can be successful as a community in helping you do that. So, I really appreciate you taking your time and letting us visit with you, but encourage you to continue to work together with us and put this together so that it benefits the Eastern Placer residents, specifically Kings Beach, Tahoe Vista, and Tahoe City, the little communities in between, that will undoubtedly suffer from having the animals having to go over the hill and having the officers spending more time on the road rather than on patrol. So, thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
My name's Carl Gustafson. Been in Squaw Valley for 50 years. I'm a dog owner, and I left a couple of pieces of paper with you, and one was about my dog, Charlie. I adopted him out of Tahoe Vista in 96. He was a good dog, because he was well-socialized. And the reason he was well-socialized, they have a lot of open space behind that shelter there, where they can walk the dogs. I walked many dogs before I chose my dog. And I had the same opportunity with the old Tahoe Truckee Animal Shelter, not the new one, which you guys visited, but they have an old one, the old Corporation Yard, and I used, for years, I was putting out signs there on Highway 67, and I enjoyed that. It's sort of tough on animals in wintertime, because it's below zero at Truckee, but in that shelter, the old shelter, not the new one, they had a nice trail there to walk by the river, and also the dogs were well-socialized there. That's why I adopted my second dog, Tommy. And what I'm getting at is, I'd like to support this small animal shelter in Tahoe Vista. And I realize it's best for the animals. I agree with you about that, but it's best for the animals. But maybe you could figure out some kind of interim thing, when it takes, it's going to take a couple of years to build this thing in Tahoe Vista, and in the interim, you could probably help them out at Tahoe Truckee to do that, have them shipped over there. And the advantage is to keep it in the truck. Tahoe Vista is, you keep services local. That's most important, and you, it's a small community, a shelter, and the big point, I thought, was is outreach things. It's not only an animal shelter, you could have an outreach space for the Berry, the Washoe Indian Tribe, Project Mana, and a whole lot of other things. And that would make a real close, Tahoe Vista already has a close knit community. And I talked with many people up there, and they encouraged me to speak in favor of trying to keep it local. I'm familiar with the Tahoe Truckee, they spend a lot of money, and it's, I call it Taj Mahal, this animal shelter here, the cats live like real fat cats over there, but the dogs, I think, they got these little glass cages, and I haven't, I'm official, I think I'm a certified dog walker over there. You have to take training. I guess you're afraid if you're walking a pit bull or something like that, it's going to tangle up with some other dog, but I'm not familiar with the walking trails there. But then the plus side, the Tahoe Truckee, the new shelter, which you guys visited, the biggest thing is, you turn over animals faster, and it's probably better care. I sort of encourage you maybe to figure out a way to do it both ways. To me, it's pretty important to have a small community animal shelter like Kings Beach, because it can be more than an animal shelter.
Thank you. There are other folks? Okay. After Ms. Waller, how many other folks wish to speak? I see one, two. Okay.
Good morning. Ellie Waller, Tahoe Vista resident. This is my backyard. We tout private-public partnerships, and given what this group has done the last six months, I think, I would hope this board would have an appetite to revisit what you put on paper as 30-year commitment and work with this group for a couple more months to see what you can get on paper as the private donations. Much like the museum, if the people are given the opportunity to go forward this, you will get more commitments from community members as far as Washoe County and the West Shore, and I think it behooves you not to make a decision today and try to work this as a collaborative effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Then, I got one and two.
Hello, my name is Pano. I come from Italy here for holiday, and I noticed the shelter because of good location, and I think that people that come here, they maybe don't go to work a dog like I do, but they may adopt a dog, because the good location is well seen by people coming here on Lake Tahoe for holiday. And so, I don't think this shelter should be closed. There are people that care, they really care about the animals, and also would like to point out what Gandhi said, that the civility of a country is measured by how people treat the animals. We should reflect about that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, was there anybody else after this? Okay.
Hi, thank you for hearing us today.
We do have one more. Okay.
Thank you for hearing us today. My name is Pamela Hormiotis. I'm the original founder of Pet Network. I run Lake Tahoe Wolf Rescue. I greatly support the group that's trying to keep the shelter here. I just wanted to say that our chambers of commerce, our real estate agents, everyone is inviting more and more people to come into the Tahoe area. The more people we have, the more pets we have. I really feel that eventually, and sooner than later, sooner than 30 years, we're going to need both shelters. So, I would like to encourage you to consider working with the Truckee Shelter. It's a beautiful, well-run shelter, and can house these animals while we're working on putting together a shelter here in Tahoe Vista for the local residents. Thank you.
Sir? All right, is there anybody else? Okay, this gentleman will have the last word, then.
Excellent. My name's Kevin McDermott. I live in Kings Beach. I have, I own a company, Tahoe Valuation Services. I have three rescues, okay? I want to say that, from my perspective, I look at it as a bigger-picture issue as well. Seems like we have tremendous support for keeping the animal shelter in Tahoe Vista. I haven't seen any support for transferring it over to Truckee. As a real estate appraiser, I remember Truckee before it was incorporated, when it was considered Eastern Nevada County. It couldn't afford an animal shelter like that until they incorporated. So, I hope that the people of, that you folks will recognize us, not as Eastern Placer County, but as North Tahoe, and that you will work with us to keep our shelter in North Tahoe, as opposed to us possibly looking at incorporating and affording our own shelter within 30 years. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to the board for any additional thoughts or consideration or motion and/or questions of staff. Supervisor Montgomery?
So, I had, a couple people raised a number of issues that I just wanted to get some clarification on from county staff. Somebody raised the issue of, it sounded like they had a concern that this would be a different approach to being a no-kill shelter or when euthanasia was necessary if it moved from Tahoe Vista to Truckee. Is it the same approach? Is it a different approach?
Supervisor Montgomery, it'd be almost identical. Essentially, we are, we never euthanize any adoptable animals. The Humane Society never euthanizes adoptable animals. So, they would go through their process, essentially, any animal that we picked up that became the property of the Humane Society, they would use similar behavioral analysis to make sure that they could find, you know, make sure that the animal is adoptable rather than euthanize.
Okay. Because it sounded like that was a concern that some folks had, that there would be a different approach to what animals were adoptable and what animals unfortunately would have to be euthanized, but it would be the same.
Essentially, yes.
Okay. I wrote myself notes, and now I can't read any of them that I wrote. I'm so sorry. Oh, I just, I did want to respond to the young lady from Italy, and welcome everyone. Right back there. Thank you.
And she's a volunteer.
Excellent, wonderful. Your Gandhi quote, you know, is absolutely right on, but that makes me say, what is the best thing that we can do for the animals in an appropriate period of time? And this is frankly the piece that I'm struggling with. It's the length of time that these three phases are going to take to implement. And while you're really aggressive, and I love that, I just have to say that I share, I think it was Supervisor Yule's concerns about the length of time on this. I think what we're really looking at is not a two-year process, but maybe a six, seven, even eight-year process. I can just tell you, I think the town of Truckee took six years to get through their whole process into an open shelter. They didn't have the TRPA to deal with as well in that. They also built, to their credit, in a time when construction was fairly slow, and there were actually a number of contractors who were out there looking for work. I don't know if we, if we went forward with this, would have that same kind of luxury. I know that the Carson City Animal Shelter, that they're trying to build down there right now, their bids just came in, and it's, they thought it was going to be under $3 million, came in at four and a half. I'm sorry, they thought it was going to be $3.9 million, came in at four and a half. So, I have some real concerns about the time and the dollars, and I'm really concerned, and I've expressed this to Linda, about relying on that parcel tax. I will tell you, you know, talking to folks throughout the county, not just here in Eastern Placer County, but throughout the county, understanding it would be a parcel tax for the service area, which is all the way to Immigrant Gap, I think relying on those dollars is just going to be hugely problematic. And I would encourage you to continue your fundraising, whatever the board decides today, and just come all in on providing great services to animals, whether it's in Tahoe Vista or whether it's in Truckee or whether it's in Incline Village, because I think all of us share the same passion to make sure that the animals get the best care that they can And I'm just, I'll tell you, I've really struggled with this, and I've had a lot of meetings with Linda and a lot of meetings with Ramona, and I just, I can't get over this hurdle of time and money, honestly. And I think the opportunity to partner with Truckee, which is something that we looked at back in, I believe, 2005, many years ago, I think the opportunity to partner with Truckee is an opportunity that we can't pass up. And I think that at the same time we partner with Truckee and continue moving forward as a community, we try to figure out, how do we, how do we regroup so as a community 20 years from now, 10 years from now? We can start fundraising for a shelter in Eastern Placer County, because it is a regional facility. It's not just a Tahoe City, Kings Beach, Tahoe Vista. It's everybody. It's Squaw, it's Alpine, it's Norden, it's Immigrant Gap, it's Blue Canyon. I'm just so stuck on my concerns with time and money, and in the meantime, the animals are sitting in that shelter, which even with all the passion and the care and the love that the employees and the volunteers lavish on them, is substandard, and we all recognize that. I don't think there was a single person today who said, "That's an awesome shelter. I want my animal to go there." So, I'm going to move that we adopt the contract with Truckee and move forward with that.
Okay, we have, excuse me, excuse me, we have, excuse me. Ladies and gentlemen, there's a motion. Do we have a second on the motion?
Second down.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Under discussion, any other supervisors have any other comments? So, my comments simply be, the comparison to the museum situation is a false comparison, because the county is not being asked to trust them, or it will cost us. And that's what's being asked of us right now. And while our obligation right now is to look out for what's in the best interest of those animals, and clearly, the Truckee facility is in the best interest of those animals over what we have right now, our obligation is also to look out for the taxpayers. And the simple fact of the matter is that animal control services is a mandated service on the counties. And while you sit there and you say, "Trust us, we'll be able to raise the money," if you don't, we have to pay for it, which means discretionary dollars from our general fund that are not going to other services, like road maintenance or snow plowing or things like that, because if two, three years down the road, you're not successful in raising the ongoing operating costs associated with keeping a facility here, it comes back to us, back to our board, to figure out how to pay for it, and it goes back to taxpayers in general across the county, not just up here, but in Granite Bay, in Rockland, in Roseville. All the taxpayers have to pay for that ongoing operating expense versus the deal that's on the table today for clearly a better facility for our animals and at a deal that is better for the taxpayers, with certainty that it's better for the taxpayers. None of what the board is being asked to do precludes the involvement of any of the folks, the folks that have spoken here today. Nothing about the Humane Society in Truckee says, "We don't want volunteers." Nothing about the operation in Truckee says, "We're not interested in having groups that are, that care about animals come and work with us to provide better experience for the animals." There's nothing that precludes for an ongoing relationship with the animals. Yes, it does mean a 13-mile drive. From my house to where I adopted our dog out of the Auburn Shelter is a 23-mile drive. I managed to make it the additional 10 miles to adopt my dog. The, the, the deal, that, excuse me, you had the opportunity to comment. There is a motion and a second, and our board is about to vote. Under discussion, the board has the opportunity to explain our reasoning behind our vote. You have the opportunity to ask questions, and you could have all along through this process on the 30-year point. So, with that, we will call for a roll call.
Chairman Yule, if I may. One, one point that I do want to make is that Placer County actually does, under the contract, the terms of the contract have the option for a, I believe it's a 30-day, 60-day cancellation, if for some reason we should not be satisfied with the level of services that the town of Truckee is giving with us. That is the caveat. So, if we, if, it's all our money. We're all taxpayers here. So, it's, it's very important to understand that if for some reason we are not satisfied with the town of Truckee and the services they're providing, we do have that option. But again, you're absolutely correct. It would be with a $750,000 penalty.
Okay, so this does not require a roll call, since it's not a reallocation. So, that being the case, all in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed? None? Thank you very much. All right, we move on to our next item, which is yet again, another timed item. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to invite you to continue your conversation outside. We do have additional business of the county that needs to be conducted, so please, please go ahead and take your conversation outside. Thank you very much, especially your polite comments. Appreciate that. Hold a sec, Jerry, let's let this.
You don't need 20 minutes, really, do you?
No, no, one hour. No, just 10 minutes.
All right, thank you.
Linda, thank you.
Craig? You need my mic closer. You guys can't do these. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, again, if you would, please, take your conversation outside. We have additional board items we need to get to. Okay, Jerry, go ahead, please.
Good afternoon, Chairman Yule, members of the board. Jerry Gammas, Director of Administrative Services. And with me today is Andrew Sisk, our Audit Controller. And what we're doing today is providing a brief update on our transient occupancy tax audit and communication strategy, our current strategy for auditing the eastern slope. As a matter of background, the Administrative Services Department, through its Revenue Services Division, administers the transient occupancy tax, commonly known as TOT tax, for the county of Placer. We do have, like I said, a We do have, like I said, a short presentation that we'll be utilizing, and I'll turn it over to Andy here in a second. But basically, what, through our Revenue Services Division, we, we manage about 3,800 accounts, which we call certificate holders, overall in, in Placer County for the unincorporated areas, with the majority of those being in the eastern slope. 2,900 of those, 2,900 plus are under manage, under the supervision of management companies, and about 779 are managed individually. So what we wanted to, since our last time in front of this board for our ordinance update, you see also a little section where it talks about the increase. This is the increase in certificate holders since that time in 2013. So we wanted to just talk a little bit about the audit strategy and the communication strategy for the eastern slope, but just to kind of give you a magnitude of the audit. We collect approximately $12 million annually between the eastern slope and the western slope, with the lion's share of that money coming from the eastern slope. As you saw in the previous slide, the majority of our certificate holders are here in the eastern slope. So what we did as part of our kind of best practices for administering this program under the county ordinance, we enlisted the assistance of our Auditor Controller's Office to conduct audits of the program, not only on the western side, which is now concluded, but also the eastern side. So what I wanted to do is turn it over to Andy, since he is our primary contractor for this engagement, and just have him run through just a few quick slides for you and answer any questions that you might have about not only the audit itself, but the communication strategy.
Thank you, Jerry. Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors, Jerry, David. So wanted to talk a little bit about our communication strategy before we get into the audit strategy. One of the things that we've been remiss probably in doing in the past is really communicating out front before we even get out and do the audits. And so this year, we took a more proactive approach. We started with some community meetings, met with the Resort Association twice, met at each of the MAC meetings, Donner, Squaw, and the North Tahoe MAC at Kings Beach. Even prior to that, we had meetings with Supervisor Montgomery. We've met with county management staff. In addition, two of our board members sit on the audit committee, and we've been talking about an audit approach as we move forward as it relates to the TOT program. So that's a little bit of the communication we've done to date. Just a little history on, on the west slope. We conducted that audit in 2013, 2014 year. It was actually the audit of the 2012 TOT year. We had eight operators that we audited that year. And unfortunately, that audit didn't go very well, from the standpoint of that the Auditor Controller had to issue adverse opinions, which means we couldn't give an opinion that the operator complied with the ordinance. In addition, we had one operator that was collecting more than the 8% tax. We had one operator that was not entering into long-term rental agreements. And probably the biggest thing we found in this audit was insufficient supporting documentation. Operators could not provide support to us to verify the revenues that they're reporting to Jerry's shop. With that, we've, we were really pushed to go out and really do some training with some of our operators. And we're going to be doing that in September. And it's really in conjunction of getting ready to start the east slope of the audit, which, just a little history, we did the east slope back in 2008 for the 2006 TOT year. There were a number of key findings as a result of that audit that took some time to actually change the ordinance. Some of you may recall that there were a lot of mandatory fees that were being tacked on to the room rentals, and that was something we discovered during the audit. So it took us a couple of years to get that ordinance changed, to get all the, all the operators up to speed, and then we started prospectively collecting tax on those room-related charges. So we definitely want to revisit that. Some of the same key findings we saw back then, we were seeing in the west slope in terms of insufficient, insufficient supporting documentation, again, not able to verify the revenues that were being reported. So we're, again, we're going to be targeting doing the, an audit up in the east slope for the 2014 calendar year. We are in the process of sending out a questionnaire that'll go out to about 850 operators, 60 management companies, and the 779 operators that Jerry mentioned. And those questionnaires are really going to help the auditors assess risk and evaluate which auditees we want to go out and, and verify their revenues. Before we even do that, we're going to conduct some training up in the Tahoe area, two sessions, probably in the month of September, right after the Labor Day weekend. Once we get those questionnaires, we get more feedback, we'll do about 10 to 25 audits in the field, with the hope that we can do actually more audits from our desk, and getting operators to send us some of the reports that they use to prepare the reports that they send to Jerry. This way, we can get a little bit more sample size. 25 of 850 is not too much, when you consider the east slope, we did 25% of the operators. We really want to increase that percentage. To increase that percentage, there's no way that the Auditor Controller can audit 850 operators, so we're going to utilize a consultant to help us, probably in the 2016 calendar year, to continue this effort. They'll leverage off our questionnaires and the work that we're doing. Last, SB 593 is an online rental bill that's currently before the legislature. I just took a look this morning, it's in the inactive file, which means it's, it's dead for the year, it could come back next year. But really what that legislation was doing was trying to get Airbnb and VRBO, basically a little bit more documented, from a state standpoint, so that way we can then change our ordinance, if applicable, when that legislation is passed. With that, we'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions of Andy or Jerry by board members? Supervisor Montgomery?
Yeah, are, are we doing any particular outreach with our legislative folks in Sacramento on the SB 593 and having that come back? Because what I read, and it was a little bit concerning, was that the sentiment around the Capitol seemed to be that they just thought the county should come up with their own rules and regulations and, and bargain, negotiate with VRBO and Airbnb.
Well, I know our Auditors Association has been monitoring it, because we have a number of tax collectors that also are, are consolidated auditor, controller, treasurer tax collectors. So we've been monitoring it. There hasn't been a lot of feedback, because it really isn't in our area. I don't know if Jerry has been, has any thoughts on that, if you've heard anything?
No, and we can certainly engage, you know, our, our lobbyists for the state and add that as an item.
Yeah, I, I just think it's, you know, my concern about, you know, Placer County trying to negotiate with Airbnb or VRBO is, you know, we're one of 58 counties, and I think the idea of having the state create a statewide set of regulations and rules that apply would just be much more sensible. And so I would just encourage us to work with our, our, you know, our lobbyists at the state level to push that message.
Seeing no other board members with any questions?
Yeah, just the, the only caveat is that I'm not looking for the state to do anything for the county. So, so I think we, we just need to be very careful about anything that the state does.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Andy.
Okay, having completed our timed items, we'll move on to our department items. First item is approval of the minutes of June 16th Board of Supervisors meeting with Supervisor Montgomery having been absent, so do we have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion, Holmes, second. Duran, roll call, please.
Holmes?
Yes.
Duran?
Yes.
Montgomery?
I'm staying.
Yule?
Aye. Thank you very much. We'll move on to the item number four. This is a seed item regarding our Tahoe area projects, a little update for us.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Paul Thompson with the Community Development and Resource Agency. Here today to provide, your board with an update of the various projects in the Tahoe area. We're going to start first with the Alpine Meadows and Squaw Valley area, first with the Alpine Sierra subdivision. This is a proposal to develop a subdivision up to 33 single-family homes and 14 single-family residents in a half-plex configuration. It's located on a 46-acre site. As far as the, the status on the project, the county staff and applicant are working together to develop a co-leak alternative to be analyzed in EIR that will reduce the environmental impacts associated with the project. As far as the status of circulation of the draft EIR, that could be as early as late 2015. Just next to this project is the Stanford Chalets project. This is a proposal to demolish the existing Stanford Alpine Chalet building and construct the construction of 18 residential half-plexes in its place. As far as the status, the staff has reviewed the initial sum bill that came from the applicant and provided comments on that project, and we are waiting for responses to those comments. In Squaw Valley, the policy, Squaw Valley is a newer project, proposes development of a subdivision of 63 units, which includes a mix of single-family and half-plex units on an unimproved 20-acre site. And the EIR contract has been executed for the project, and meaning, kickoff meeting was held on July 13. The draft EIR could be available for public circulation in early spring 2016. As far as the Squaw Creek Restoration Project, this is centered around the restoration of the creek, and it's a collaborative effort between the Friends of Squaw Valley, Squaw Creek, excuse me, the county, and potentially the Squaw Valley Real Estate, Squaw Valley Real Estate as it relates to the restoration efforts associated within the village at Squaw Valley specific plan. As for the status, the Friends, the Friends is working with Squaw Valley Real Estate on funding and grant opportunities, while the county is working on the environmental review for the project. The Fulton Garage, underground garage proposal is, includes excavation and construction of a 12-car garage underneath the ski run. That project has been approved by the Planning Commission and is set for construction here in, beginning in August. Plum Jacks Squaw Valley Inn Project proposes to demolish the existing 61-room inn and construct a new hotel building, underground garage, a three-story and four-story residential building in its place. EIR consultant has been, has begun preparation of the draft EIR. It's anticipated that it will be released for public review in the fall of 2015. Planning Commission consideration of the project could be as early as spring 2016. Truckee River Corridor Access Plan proposes to construct a multi-use trail approximately nine miles long from Squaw Valley to the Placer County line in, in the town of Truckee, near the town of Truckee. Originally, this project was envisioned that the entire nine miles, miles would be located in the Caltrans right away, adjacent on the east shoulder of Rapid Route, State Route 89. After further review and analysis of that, of that, with our Department of Public Works, we've looked at a separated trail, and based on that, we're actively looking at alignments and alternative alignments, and getting the environmental studies necessary to review those, those alignments. As far as the village at Squaw Valley specific plan, on May 18th, the county circulated a draft EIR, a 60-day public review period, which closed, which closed on July 17th. Planning Commission conducted a public hearing to hear comments on the draft EIR. The final EIR is, is now being prepared, and as anticipated, will be scheduled for public hearings late, or early, actually, early 2015. The first round of public hearings will begin with the Planning Commission, and final action will be in front of your board at a later date. Moving on to projects in Martis Valley area, as your board is aware, the proposal, the Martis Valley West proposal involves the transfer of density from the east side of 267 to the west side, and adoption of a specific plan that would identify land use patterns to accommodate up to 760 residential units and 6.6 acres of commercial. As far as the status, revised notice of preparation was released on February 27th, and notifying the public that the project was modified to exclude a portion of the project within the Tahoe Basin and the elimination of the area plan component. The draft EIR for the revised project is anticipated to be released for public review this September. Newer project, the Tahoe Expedition Academy School Site, just submitted, proposes to utilize eight unimproved lots within the Hopkins Village project area for a one-year period to accommodate a private school for up to 50 students between grade levels 6 through 11. Site improvements include 10 modular classrooms, parking areas, self-contained bathrooms. Project is located at the northeast corner of Shaffer Mill Road and Hopkins Village Drive in the Martis Valley area, and this item will be going to the zoning administrator here in the near future, July 23rd. It should be noted that the applicant is also in contract on a 42-acre parcel previously known as the Hopkins Ranch, proposing to construct a permanent facility that's in the immediate area. The applicant is currently in design, and however, an application has not been submitted yet to the county for that permanent facility here. Projects within the basin, Tahoe City Lodge, this is the proposal to redevelop the existing commercial complex into a 120-unit lodge that would include a mix of hotel rooms, one and two-bedroom suites, hotel amenities, parking, as well as redevelopment of an existing clubhouse, clubhouse building, and shared-use parking on the Tahoe City Lodge property. And as far as status, the notice preparation was released on this project on June 3rd, and the public, public comment period will end on August 3rd. So we are still in the public review period on that project. After the comment period closes, we'll begin working on the draft EIS. EIS is required because it's in the basin. Hopefully, that'll be available for public circulation in 2015, late December 2015. The Voltae Mixed Use Project, smaller project up in the Kings Beach industrial area, construction of two, two-story buildings, approximately 9,400 square foot area. The first floor is to accommodate the commercial, there is, on the second floor, a residential component of five units per building. As far as status, we completed the environmental review on that project and should be ready to go to zoning administrator here early fall. The Sun and Sand Project proposes to redevelop the existing 26 units Sun and Sand Hotel into a three-story, 10-man residential condominium project. Project comprises 0.7 acres, is located immediately west of the North Tahoe Event Center. A pre-development meeting is conducted in April. And as far as status, the applicant has most recently submitted a development, a land development application for that property, and it's currently in review. So that is, concludes my presentation. If there's any comments, the applicant answers us.
Okay, board members have any questions? Supervisor, turn your lights on, and I don't know if you had a question. All right, while this is an information item, no action will be taken by the board. If there's any member of the public that has a question or comment, or I can provide some input, feel free.
Thank you, Ellie Waller, Tahoe Vista resident. We are looking closely at the Tahoe City Lodge. When you read the documentation, I think it's misleading. The project is proposing 120 units on 1.4 acres, not three. The three is an easement that is not the project site, so I've submitted lots of comments on that. Also, the Martis Valley West specific plan, outside the Tahoe Basin, I'm requesting that it'll be a 60-day review period on the environmental documentation. One side of the ridge is Tahoe, one side of the ridge is Truckee. There could be some scenic and traffic impacts to the Tahoe Basin, so I would like to see a 60-day comment period on that. You had two other informational items that I would have commented on, so is it okay if I make a comment now, just for the record?
Sure.
The TOT. I don't want to take away from our dire need of affordable housing, but that audit really needs to look at uses that are misuses, and we all know where a lot of them are. So I think the audit needs to take in consideration, we got to figure out a better way to get affordable housing on the ground. I'm hoping with the new area plan proposal for allowing units on less than an acre can solve some of that problem for us, but I did want that on the record. And I'm hoping that Delegate Severson will be bringing back more information tomorrow. The TRPA is going to go in-depth on their action plan, and I'll be there to take notes. And lastly, back to Martis. I know that Mountainside Partners has reached out to some community members about a proposal for approximately 50 camp sites up on the ridge. I'm looking forward to that coming forward in a public forum, forum, to the nit rack and up through the ranks. Thank you.
And would we be in first position on this?
We are.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, we are. And that is part of what the lender has acknowledged, that we are in first position in front of them and that further it does not constitute any level of default with their, with their terms.
Good. This is my happy face. You won't see much of that today.
All right. Any public have any questions or comments? Seeing no public, we have a motion on the two applications by Supervisor Holmes, the second by Supervisor Duran. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The only other items remaining for the board's consideration today would be under item seven, closed session. I understand from county council that he's willing to move these items to our next agenda. Is there anything that you need to announce along those lines?
No, just that I'm deferring the two closed session items to a future agenda and there's no need for the board to meet in closed session today.
Okay, so that concludes all of our items for this board meeting and we will adjourn to our regularly scheduled August 4th board meeting down in Auburn. Thank you all very much.